A call to order. The Planning Commission meeting of Corte Madera for January 8, 2019. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And our role, please.
Commissioner Metcalfe.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Bendah.
Thank you. Before we get into any agenda items, I just want to reiterate at the start of the meeting that we have limitations to our meetings. And among other things, they will not go beyond 11:00 p.m. And at 9:30 is the deadline for any new item. And if we want to extend, we do it by vote in 30-minute increments for any time after 10:00 p.m. So that's just a forewarning, so we bear that in mind as we proceed. On our agenda, we always open up the meeting for public comment for that which is not on the agenda. So if you are here to speak on something other than what we've got agendized, please stand up to the microphone and you have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll move right through our nonexistent consent calendar to new hearings. So the first item on tonight's agenda is a new hearing for 301 Corte Madera Town Center, Flores Restaurant. A public hearing for permit amendment application, PL 201-9-0003, to amend a previously approved precise plan and design review application at 301 Corte Madera Town Center. This has to do with the exterior shell, I believe. So, Mr. Wolf, please.
One thing, I will need to recuse myself because of the adjacency to the project, so...
Thank you, Charles. I'd like to remember that.
Tonight, we're going to be discussing a proposed permit amendment for some exterior changes to the Flores Restaurant. This is sort of an after-the-fact or request by the owner and applicant who are here tonight to speak to you as well about sort of the process by which this is coming to you. But needless to say, this has previously been reviewed by the Commission and was approved on June 26, the original approval for the exterior changes and the sign and the precise plan for Flores Restaurant over at Town Center. If you haven't been there, it's open and operating, obviously, I think, since early November or late October. The Commission did at its June 26, 2018, meeting adopt Resolution Number 18-010 approving the applications that I mentioned before for designer review and precise plan amendment and sign permit applications. That resolution is included in your staff report as Attachment 2. I've also included the meeting minutes from that meeting in Attachment 3. After the approval, building permits were issued in late August and September, and the applicant quickly went to work in trying to remodel the former PF Chang's building for the new Flores Restaurant. And at the time, they were ready to occupy and open up their restaurant. It became clear that there were some fairly significant changes to the approval that were actually constructed. And that was mostly related to the exterior colors on the cap or the sort of the cornice of the structure, the entryway, which was, you know, I have some pictures and we'll show you in a second, and some of the wood materials that were used above the window openings. Those changes, you can see, and they've been applied and they are out at the site today in an as-built condition. Staff, obviously, was concerned about these changes when they were made. We were made aware of them and inspected them and saw the differences and felt it was appropriate to allow for temporary occupancy of the interior of the restaurant, but has prohibited occupancy of the exterior patio area, which has not been used since that time. So upon being made aware, I think the applicant has tried to understand how best to resolve this issue. It's taken a little bit of time, but has come forth and has proposed a permit amendment application. It's here tonight to seek approval from the Commission for these changes. I have a couple of slides. Let me just finish with the staff report. Normally, how this works is, given the changes, the Planning Commission should review essentially the findings that relate to the changes that have been proposed and see if the findings can continue to be made. And I've outlined, I think, the relevant findings in the staff report, 5, 6, and 7, of design review findings. Staff believes that while the change and while the process could have definitely have been better, ultimately, at the end of the day, it is, the findings can be made. It is attractive remodel, in staff's opinion, that sort of creates the internal, the visual pleasing setting for occupants and visitors and the general community. So with that, I have a couple of images that just show the original approved elevations back from June, and mostly without having a pointer that actually works on these screens. Unfortunately, I'll try to do with this, the mouse here. But you'll see from the change to the next elevation, the cap or the cornice here has gone to a dark brown. Whoops. And the entryway from this, what was a China white color, to more of a natural cementer or plaster look, if I have the wording correct on that. Those are the most significant. There were some material changes, just from what was proposed as a teak to a cedar. Nonetheless, same coloration for the most part. And actually, this is the as-built. I will note, going out there today, and you'll see this in some of the pictures, this is now looking toward the highway side, the facade facing east, as approved, and then the proposed change here, so just showing that difference. And an image, again, the former PF Chang's. And then this was as rendered, as proposed, and then obviously, as, I don't have a good image of the whole thing today, but I tried to, I was out there today. One thing to note, I do think the doors that were shown in the proposed permit amendment application show a dark brown here, both on the, in this location, the patio doors and the front door. But in actuality, they are, when you go out to the site, and I know they actually are a lighter color, as you can see here, and they are the lighter brown. They're not, they're not actually the dark brown color.
They don't go with the dark.
And additionally, I wanted to point out that there is one other feature that was added more recently, and that was not part of the application, but there are these speakers that were attached to the cedar siding up there as well. That really, I did one of the other things. They have planted the bougainvillea, but it's obviously going to need some time to grow, but it's there and it's starting to train up the side of the wall a little bit. But obviously, that was also one of the conditions that the Commission was interested in at the last, during the June public hearing. So with that, I will complete my staff report, and I know that the applicant is here as well to say a few words if, when that's appropriate.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Commissioners, do you have any question for Mr. Wolf or for staff regarding any of this? Phyllis, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, Adam, one of the other things I noticed, that the site was the, where the trash compactor or where the trash storage is to the right side of the building now has creeping fig, I guess, on it. And this was one of the things that we had asked about. This would be, I guess, Monty had gone ahead and done that. And it looks much nicer than what I remember seeing before.
Thanks. That's good to hear.
All right. Margaret?
Did you say there are speakers?
Would you please check your microphone? Make sure that's on.
Hello?
Yeah, I think that's...
There you go.
Is that it?
You had it. Put your, touch it. Nope. There you go.
Did you say there were speakers that were installed?
There were, yeah. And that was a more recent addition. You could see them up on the wood area up there. And, you know, I'll let the applicant speak to that, but I assume it's to sort of compete with the road and the freeway sort of sounds that come off the highway there. But again, that was, I think, while not in your staff report, I think is also part of this request as well for the permit amendment.
Two, okay, so he'll speak to that?
And it would appear that all of the cedar material has been stained or is a sealer on it of some kind. That's what it appears like.
I believe that's correct. Yeah, I was out there today and noticed that as well.
Okay. Great. Okay. So applicant, please step up.
Thanks, Phil.
And explain your application to us, please.
Hi. Hello. Thank you for having me. As Adam said...
And your name is?
My name is Adriano Paganini, and I'm one of the owners of Flores Corte Madera. And I'm probably the one who has had most responsibility into the changes in the facade. And that's why I'm here, to explain why I changed it and why it came about the way it came about. So if we could bring it back to the, actually, this is perfect. So truthfully, the brown was actually there from before, from PF Chang's. And as I went there on site pretty much every day, I concluded that the original design was too washed out, was too white. Was, all of it was white. If we, I mean, if we could go back to, thank you, I appreciate it. So, yeah, exactly. That one is really good. I mean, I love the white, and there's a lot of white in the restaurant, but I was concerned that would be too much white. And as they were painting it, because the brown was already up there, I got to see how it would look when it was brown. And so I concluded that was better. I didn't go through it, the thought process, that I couldn't just change it, but I did. And so then, that's why this whole process came about, a little convoluted, another way it should have been. But that's, that's, that's why. The other change, the cement, same thing. Again, I wanted to try to give a sense of entry and not have just the entire thing being white. I thought it was more attractive. And since I take a lot of pride into, and I spend a lot of time on the look and feel of these restaurants, because, again, is very important for the success of them, I made that call and I made the change. So I'm here to ask, please let me do it this way, because it does look a lot better. Above the wood is a change of material, but it looks the same as it would have been. I don't remember why we changed from teak to the other wood. I think it was cost. This place did cost a lot of money, so we ended up just staining the wood. And, well, I mean, I think the restaurant came out looking terrific. I think it looks great, and please let me do, let me keep it that way. But I understand why you would want me to be back here, because the process wasn't followed the way it should have been. I understand that now, more than before, for sure.
Yeah.
Yes. Any other questions?
So, yeah, your mea culpa is accepted and so forth in many ways. But before I ask for other questions, it is important to the town and the staff that any changes get registered with them. Otherwise, we have chaos.
Exactly.
And I appreciate you going through the process, but it just has to be for anybody and everybody that wants anything.
Of course.
So, thank you. Phyllis, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
Questions and comments?
Just questions.
Just questions. Okay. All right, I'll ask it as a question. Looking at the wood, I guess I'd call it a transom. I don't know what you call it, over the windows and doors.
You're talking about this part, right?
Yes. Yeah, I don't, as I said, I don't know what you call it. I would call it a transom.
There is no window behind there.
Yeah. Transoms don't have to have windows. Anyway, the point is, you've got the dark brown at the top, which is quite attractive and has, why, yeah, okay. Why are you making a second color of wood? Why don't you make the cedar, you know, stain it to match the wood that you have, wood color, the dark wood color you have up at the top?
Because Flores, in general, aside from the brown wood cap that helps me frame the building, uses in its entirety light wood color, inside and outside. That's our, part of our brand. We have another location in the city, and that's what we use. It's part of our brand is to use the light color. It's meant to be fresher and more modern. That's why that decision was made.
Why didn't you then do the roof, the lighter color?
Because by doing the roof, the lighter color, it wouldn't frame the building as well as the darker color. That's my reasoning for it.
Yeah, and your original plan, you weren't making it any color, the white.
Yes, it was white originally.
So from white to cedar is darker for frame. Also, I noticed in the photograph, it shows, I guess they're bifold doors, triple bifold door, yeah, right there. Now, that's in the light wood, but when you had the plans redrawn, you went dark. So which are you doing, what's drawn in the plan or...
Well, I think he's submitting what's in the photograph, because it exists.
Right. That's how, yes.
But what you had done, the original plan showed the lighter wood.
That was a mistake.
And this new one, showing the cement color, everything has the darker color.
Oh, okay. I didn't even know that. Okay. What I'm asking for, yeah, I understand what you're saying. That was, I didn't know that that was done that way, but no, it's the lighter color. So you're right. What you have is not even right again, is the darker color.
No, it's the lighter color that you've got, and the darker color is wrong, because the darker color is here, but the lighter color is there.
But the lighter color is there.
Okay. So he's submitting the photographs of what is as it is now, is what becomes a part of the record.
And that should be mentioned in the resolution, that we are following what is shown in the photograph and not necessarily what is shown in the drawing.
Interested.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Bundy?
That's it.
Is that all, Phyllis? I'm sorry.
Yes, it is.
No questions.
All right. Margaret?
So what is the purpose of the speakers that you've installed, and when will they be used?
The purpose of the speakers is to have music out there, and they will be used when we are open. We are on the side of a freeway, so there's a lot of freeway noise. And what I'm trying to do with, I installed plants inside the patio with, under those cylinder blocks. What I'm trying to do is to create, the idea is to create an oasis, so when you walk into Flores, the idea is to be transported into some resort in Mexico. And so the music helps with that, because it distracts you as you are out in the patio from the noise of the freeway. What I want to avoid, because it will never work, because it didn't work when it was PF Chang's, is to have a patio that feels like you are in a parking lot. So what I'm trying to do with the plants and the wall, with the cylinder blocks and the music, is to create an ambiance that makes you feel like you're not in a parking lot. That's what I'm trying to do. I don't know if I'm going to be successful at it yet. It's a little difficult, but I'm hoping that that will happen. I'm working on it. But that's the purpose.
Anything else, Margaret?
Nothing.
Okay.
Peter, may I ask a question of staff because of what was just said about the speakers?
Sure.
Adam, is there anything in our ordinances or in the master plan for the center having to do with the sound, music, outside speakers, time they have to be shut off, et cetera?
I'm not aware, there's, obviously, there's, there's noise ordinances and stuff like that in the town, but I'm, obviously, and I think the other thing is, Town Center has its own speakers and music playing inside. I don't know what time exactly those go off, but I assume it's around the same time that the center itself will closes. I haven't had a conversation with Monty at this point about when, maybe you have, about when those actually need to, need to be shut off, but I imagine it's consistent with it, with the restaurant hours.
But there's, the interior speakers...
No, I understand.
Would keep the sound in.
Oh.
The exterior speakers affect...
Yeah, I mean, having, actually, having been there today and the music was on, I can tell you that unless you're pretty close to the building itself, the freeway and the highway noise is actually what you hear more than the music. But I understand the question, and if it's desired that there is a sort of a time that those are explicitly, you know, turned off at night, that can be, we can certainly add that as part of the condition of approval or whatnot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. My only thoughts, questions to you are, I think that the cedar is going to age, right? Well, you know, it's not going to stay beautifully brown over time unless you plan to maintain it as such. It will photo, it'll go gray over time unless you put something on it to keep it that color constantly. So as much as it's represented now, I think it's going to age and become a different color over time unless you do something about it. That said, the same is true of the doors. Are those oak or are they something else? The front doors?
I actually don't know the wood species of a door, truthfully.
It is?
It's treated as well.
Okay. Yeah. Great. Okay. So they'll, they'll get impacted by the sun there, as will the other wood. It will bleach out, but if you're going to maintain it, I'm sure you will, because you want it to look good. The color of the speakers, they look like giant floodlights on the side of the building.
Yes, they do.
And most projects see that they get painted to the surrounding area.
You know, another idea is to try to move them further where the white is, so they will kind of go away more. Would that help?
You know, I...
They don't go away, they stand out more.
They're just, they're white.
Well, no, because they are white. So if you put them on a white wall, they will blend in into the wall.
They might, you know, how you'd do that now seems far-reaching unless they're wireless, right? So they're probably wired, you'd have to cut something open and move them over. I also wonder if at some point, speakers in the planter on the outside edge of the wall might provide, you know, that faces the building rather than building facing out, you know, so that in your seating wall, as you go around that patio, if you put the speakers in that wall somehow, you know, behind the diners in a low volume, that it might provide more noise barrier in some way and less noise apparent to outsiders and so forth. Not that I'm going to say that, but it's a suggestion that you're...
Something to look at.
The level of noise that the speakers have to produce might be lower if you produce, put speakers in an area around their very low level.
Okay.
It's been my experience with, trying to do that with speakers. It works better this way. It's going to be out there, and you're going to have to shut them off at 11:00 or whenever you shut down the lights. So I think we have that as a closure time over there. And so the lights have to go off and the speakers have to go off. If you go over to Bon Air, you can walk through there at 2:00 in the morning and the music is playing.
Oh, really?
It's just lovely, let me tell you. So this has to go off and, you know, the lights have to go off.
Absolutely.
So that would be my only commentary to this. So, any other questions before we take it up?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So as it's broken down, those are the issues, the crown, the wood, the front entry. And is it able to, are the findings able to be met that are in the new resolution? Or does anyone have any conditions that they would place upon this if they can't make the findings as they're called out? Margaret?
I can make all the, the findings of the changes of the color in the wood. I think it looks good, and if there's a plan to maintain it, I think that's, it absolutely has to be. Once it starts looking shabby, no one wants to go to the restaurant. I really object strongly to those speakers. I think they're detract. I don't think there's any plan right now about the noise. I don't know if the noise, the music is going to compete with the other music that's played at the center. And just the placement of them ruins the whole look of, it looks like, I don't know what, three ill-placed boxes in the middle of something that looks otherwise very, very good-looking.
Okay.
So that would be my condition. I'd approve it if the speakers were moved.
All right.
Or removed.
Good to hear. All right. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, I would agree with Margaret that maybe the speakers could have been done differently, but I wouldn't hold the project up based on the speakers that are there currently. Where PF Chang's was sort of dark and heavy, Flores is really light and airy. I think the exterior changes that you put in sort of work with that, with the concrete on the interior and the exterior patio, so I can make the findings for the changed plans.
Would you support any condition regarding the speakers?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you. Phyllis?
I can make the findings. I agree with Margaret about the speakers. I'm concerned about the noise, and I also find them unattractive with the design. I would like to see a condition written in that the speakers have to go off when the lights go off. It may make sense to us, but I think we need things in writing, especially when we see changes we don't know about. The other thing is, I agree with you 100% about the placement of the speakers, that they should be towards the building and not away from the building. You'd have the same effect, probably an even better effect, of having the patrons out there on the patio hearing music rather than freeway noises. And I don't know if we can make the applicant put the speakers there, but I would like something written into it, that we do not approve the speakers as currently situated.
Okay. And so with the options that I brought up, there's painting them, there's moving them to the white, and then there's moving them outside into the trellis area facing the other way.
Okay.
So if you have another option, I'm all for...
No, the option I have is the one you said, of putting it on the perimeter of the patio facing, towards the building rather than on the building itself, facing outward. And I think you'd have better coverage per se against the noise, that way, the way sound moves, et cetera. So, painting, I don't think it's going to help.
No.
I'm sorry, it's...
It's an option.
It's, if it's unattractive, it's going to be unattractive in a different color. It's, if it's unattractive, it's gonna be unattractive in a different color.
All right, Margaret, of those options, moving them or putting them in the trellis elsewhere back toward the building, and the condition of off at close of business at 11:00 PM?
And I think that, well, it's, the volume of it too needs to be considered.
Yeah. And we have to be able to check that, just like we check lighting volume, I think. And I'm not... There's some standards that building departments use, which is anything over 80 dB, 10 feet from the property line, you know, is an excessive allowable noise. I don't know if you guys would have any suggestions for this. So that's a standard that's present for many noise-making conditions, whether it's a generator, a fan, or any of that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only concern I have is there's quite a bit of ambient noise already at this location. So if you're prohibiting anything that's going to be above that level already, it would just, you know, I don't know how you decipher between the ambient noise and the noise coming from this, is what I'm saying.
So I think Margaret's right, and I think that something should be put in there, that there has to be a review process such that if you're at another location, it's not intrusive or it's not becoming a part of another environment. I mean, for instance, does, you know, the counter wanna hear this music down there?
No.
Well, the bookstore.
I mean, yeah.
The bookstore.
Yeah, the bookstore.
Yeah, I mean, I think having, I don't know if the commissioners have also observed the volume and been by there, at least. I mean, clearly, volume, the good thing with it, it's like when we require dimmers on the lighting, you can adjust it pretty easily. So there's always that opportunity to do so. I have to say, you know, between, I didn't even know, I didn't know they were on until I got to about where I am standing taking this picture, and then I could start to hear it. And there is fairly, in terms of its location and adjacency, there is the trash enclosures on the other side of this tenant space and quite a bit of distance separating this from Barnes and Nobles. Clearly, I would, yes, if it gets to another, I mean, fortunately for them, there's not another tenant I think could be impacted by these unless it was extreme volume and, you know, to a level that I think obviously all of us would think would be inappropriate. I think perhaps staff, there can be a way that staff can monitor the volume or over time, just to assure that there's, there isn't excessive volume. But other than that, I hesitate to do some sort of decibel level because of the ambient noise.
There's so much hard-to-break-out noise limitation. So with that said, then, what you're proposing that would go into a condition would be that staff will monitor this or, and/or, I think the other tenants may have some input into this.
Absolutely, and obviously, there's also the center itself and the management. I mean, fortunately, they'll, if there's any complaints from other tenants, they're gonna be the first ones to hear about that as well. So happy to sort of, I know it's a little bit loose in terms of ongoing, but it's something clearly that can be done and can be monitored over time.
So if we, instead of letting this loose on you guys in its entirety, if we said that over a six-month period that there is a sort of review conducted by staff and that you guys check in with the Town Center management and that, you know, at the end of six months, there are levels that are determined to be acceptable until such a time that, you know, someone files a complaint. But over six months, you know, that's different seasons. And right now, it's winter, so we get into the summer. By next August, we'll know what the difference is between winter and summer out there, because I think there is a difference in traffic and all that. So are you okay with that?
Sure.
That they propose a level, Phyllis?
Mm-hmm.
Margaret?
Yes.
Okay. So that would mean that the condition we would place on this that we've just discussed, despite Dr. Bundy's discord on the issue, would is that we would condition the speakers for that said review and staff review process, and that they would be moved off the building to another location determined by the applicant to point toward the building, perhaps in the trellis or in the planters behind the seating, one of the two. I don't think that's important, but getting them off the building would be appropriate. That's what I'm hearing. So other than that, I don't hear any other direct objection of the color changes.
Did you wanna put in something related to the upkeep of the wood siding? Or is that necessary? I assume a sealant is on it, because it'd be foolish not to have one.
You know, every, can we enforce maintenance? Pretty tough. But, you know, it's approved as is, and should the color become different, then I think planning staff always has the option to go back and say, "Hey, you guys gotta fix this," as would the management of Town Center, I would think. Maybe, I heard you say. So it's as it is. If it changes from this, then that's subject to a visit by the town planner.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just chime in a little bit here. I mean, obviously, it's, I think the Town Center and the tenant itself have all the incentive in the world to keep it looking nice. And nobody's gonna wanna run down facade. And I think that shows by the investment that they've made in this remodel itself. I don't know if we've had a sort of a monitoring plan on other sort of Town Center facades and exteriors, but I think we assume that, given the investment in the center's general trajectory here, that it's, they've been keeping, all the tenants really have been keeping sort of a nice upkeep. But I understand the concern, and I think obviously we'll, once, if property starts to become an issue with terms of maintenance and its look, we can address that in other ways.
And, you know, when a facility runs out of money, they stop maintaining. Could that happen here? Yes, it could, but then we've got bigger problems, I think. So the only other, it's like landscaping plan at the village.
Right.
Rereading all of our notes about what took place at the village. The landscaping wasn't big enough, wasn't done well enough, wasn't done per plan. So it just means that somebody comes back and says, "It's not maintained as it was per plan." And that's the same kind of condition, that it's, this is what it is, and it stays that way. So I think enough said. I wish they'd planted bigger bougainvillea, but Phyllis or Margaret, who would like to make an attempt at a motion?
I will, but I wanted to make a point first. On page two of the resolution, and numbers two and three have to be amended because they refer to revisions noted in the official exhibit stamped January 2nd.
Correct.
And that does not match the work that was done. And you know better than I do the wording that should be used, but it has to match the photos, not the drawn plan.
Correct.
So I don't know what wording you wanna use instead.
So I think we can say that this approval permits only those revisions noted in the exterior elevation plan stamped official exhibit with received stamp date of January 2nd, 2019, except as, you know, except for the front door and patio doors, which shall be modified as built or, and as shown as on the photos that were provided during the public hearing of today's date.
Yeah, I can't even read the writing on the 11 by 17. That identifies this stuff, but...
Except for, what was that wording again?
Except for the front door and patio doors.
Yeah, it's still identified as teak and so forth, so it could be changed to be, they can either change the plans or you change the wording in the documents.
Yeah.
So, and every place where it says teak has become cedar. Every place where it shows the doors as black or brown becomes red oak. And the...
Painting of the cap?
Yeah, as existing.
No.
So they're gonna have to draw new plans? And have a replacement official exhibit?
We can have that as well, but I don't have the stamp date or anything like that, so this is a way to actually approve it tonight without actually having to wait for another drawing.
Okay, but could it be approved pending receipt of another drawing? I mean, I don't know the legally...
This is, I think, as I explained it, there's nothing, as far as I can tell, all the other, everything else is accurately described here.
Well, the cap on the side of the building, the dark brown at the top?
It is, it's in the plan.
It's in the drawing, yeah.
Okay, you put that in the drawing. And the stereo speakers?
The speakers, understood, but you have another condition for that anyways.
Yeah, I wrote something down here.
And in fact, the drawing shows no speakers on it, so there you go.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying. And it says, the way this is written is there can't be anything else except what is in...
As per the plan.
The plan, and speakers are not.
Exactly.
Okay, let me try this. In the matter of permit amendment number PL 2019-0003 to amend Planning Commission Resolution 18-010 adopted on June 26th, 2018, allowing for exterior design modifications, including changes to colors at the restaurant entryway and building cornice at 301 Corder Madera Town Center for Floris Restaurant with the following added conditions, and I actually divide it into three things, that the speakers be moved off the building, and we could say preferably to face the building, but they should be moved off the building. Speakers to be turned off when lights are turned off. And speakers should be reviewed by staff to check effects of this sound? To check...
Over a six-month period?
Over a six-month period. Okay. Did I hit them all?
And amending... I think, yeah.
And amending the colors?
No, the condition of approval, number two, right?
Yeah. All right, condition number two and three both refer to the official exhibit. So you'd have to add that wording to two and three. So we'd add with the wording added to conditions of approvals, number two and three.
But you also wanted to call out the difference in the color on the doors.
So...
Well...
That's what she's referring to.
That's what I'm saying, two refers to, and I'm saying that same wording, except for the front door and patio doors has to be included in three, because...
And that wording is except, say, can you...
For the front and patio doors. I didn't catch the rest of what you said. I was leaving it to you.
Okay.
Well, as provided in...
The photographs presented at this hearing and as built.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And then three talks about how to be constructed substantially in accordance with the plan, and so that same wording we jump into three also.
Correct.
So I think I hit all of them now.
Okay, I think so, if you're satisfied.
The attorney feels it's...
So can you make a roll call on that?
As long as everybody...
What, when you second?
As long as everybody, the commissioners understood what the motion is, then you're fine.
All right.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Need a second.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendel?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Metcalf?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
Thank you very much, all right. Yeah.
Excuse me?
All right, thank you. We now continue with item B on our new hearings, which is 1400 Redwood Highway, Macy's. This is a public hearing for a design review, precise plan amendment, and sign permit application PL 2018-0093-DRC regarding exterior painting and modifications to the four existing signs of the Macy's Department Store at 1400 Redwood Highway. So have all the commissioners done a drive-by? Okay. Phil, please.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, members of the public. Wanted to bring your attention to, I'll just mention the two emails that are at places. One email addresses the Macy's building as well as the next item, which is the village. And the second email just addresses the village. So just wanted to bring those two emails to your attention. I believe one was emailed to you, and the other one was just emailed to staff. Also wanted to bring your attention to the right of Commissioner Metcalf is the color samples for the proposed project. Yep, those two, the white and the white and black. So as described, this is for an exterior modification to the existing Macy's building. That building has been there since the early 80s. It was constructed as part of the village at Corder Madera Center. However, it is located, though it is located on the site of the village, it is its own separate parcel. It has its own separate ownership, and it is not controlled by the management of the village, which is the Macy's Corporation. No significant modifications to the exterior of the building have taken place since its construction. And the proposal, as the applicant will describe, is to update and repair a fair amount of the siding as well, it's in disrepair as part of the painting of the building. And as mentioned, replacement of the signs, the locations of the signs will not change, but the font and the colors and a slight change in size of the signs will take place, which I'll talk about a little bit more. So project location, the southern end of the village, on the east side of Corder Madera. This is an example of the east elevation, which faces the bay, showing the existing condition on the left and the proposed condition lower right, again, showing the main body of the building being painted in a, what's described as, is plume white color. And that will be the masonry walls and the wood fascia and eaves will all be painted that white color. And the metal-raised standing seam roof will be sanded and repainted in a darker, called iron or a dark gray color. So those really is the two, only two colors of the building. And some other examples, so this is the... And some other examples, so this is the, the southern elevation with the signs on the, on the rooftop. Again, the, the white main body and the, and the black roof. This is the west example of the west elevation existing and proposed. And finally, this is the northern elevation that is where one accesses the, the store from the inside of the, of the Village. In terms of the signs, I've outlined in the staff report the, the, the size of the signs, and that they each will be nineteen feet wide by five feet in height, a total of ninety-six square feet in area. These conform to the Corder Madera Municipal Code. Again, these signs are, are almost identical location, and obviously we have an increase in size is a result of, is actually a decrease in the size of the letters. That red star is added, and so when you put a rectangle around that, all the stars and words, and that's how you get your square footage. So that's how we calculate sign area, is the smallest rectangle you can put around the sign, words and images, and get your square footage. Again, just other examples of the, the different locations. This is again just showing the change in the sign. This, this picture does not reflect the change in the color of the building, obviously. With all that, there are, there were some comments from emails from commissioners that there were not samples on the building, and we, we didn't, I didn't require the applicant to do that. It felt like the, the colors were quite clear, and that they, they agreed to bring the paint chips, so that's why they, they didn't actually paint the building as the next applicant did for the Village. So with that, I'm willing to entertain any questions that you have, and I am able to make all the findings required for the, this design review application.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Questions for staff? Phyllis, I'm gonna start with you. Do you have any questions for Mr. Boyle at this point?
Ah, yes, I was wondering if there had been any coordination between the Macy's ownership and Macy's Rich about colors, because even though they are separate properties, they touch, as a matter of fact, through the, the Village, you can enter Macy's, so it's perceived as being part of it, and I would hope it would be harmonious, the choice of colors. So, do you know if there's been any discussions or, about what's going on?
Yes, good question. I failed to, to mention that earlier. Yes, the, the Macy's applicant went to the Village early on in the process and, and sat down with, with Dan Hoffman, the manager, and they discussed the colors. And so they are in communication of, of the different colors that they are proposing. Obviously, they don't know exactly what's going to be approved, but, but they are in communication, and so both parties are working together.
Because the color choices of the two don't look like they're working together. That's why I was asking. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for Mr. Boyle?
I just wondered if any other color choices were discussed or brought before you, or was this just what the plan was?
This was, I believe, the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is, you know, their standard color, and I don't believe there's any alteration in color from the beginning of the application to, to today.
Is this a standard Macy's color? Oh.
That's what the applicant has, has informed me about. Yeah, they're, they're branded colors.
Okay, Charles.
So, the current Macy's signs that are on the outside, are, are they illuminated at night? Like, it's, so when you say face illuminated, it's whatever lighting is currently lighting them. Right.
Just keep this between, since staff, please, it's all right.
So, when we say face illuminated for the new ones, is it keeping the same lighting, or is it that it's gonna be edge lit inside the sign and change the overall lighting condition and put more emphasis instead of the whole facade on the lighting?
I, I'll point you to the plans that show some, some of the details of the proposed lighting. And I'll also punt to the applicant to really address the details of.
I'll re-ask.
Of the lighting, yeah.
When the applicant, after the applicant speaks.
They, they are currently illuminated.
Okay. That's all for staff.
Margaret.
Would you consider, or is the star, the red star, is that considered a logo?
Well, again, I'll defer to the applicant, but I'm pretty sure, yes, it is.
And are there rules about logos on signs?
There are. There are rules about logos, about, there are rules about logos and signs. I don't know if I can be able to get in detail. There are not specific rules about logos and signs in the town of Corder Madera.
Yeah, the town doesn't regulate or define that. However, as we've had prior discussions, there are some guidelines from court cases across the country and have been determined about corporate logos and signs and, that we've discussed at other planning commission hearings, but.
And is there a resolution to that?
Of course not.
In your discussion at other meetings, was there?
Sure, there are guidelines that the, that case law provides, but, but.
The other application that you were referring to. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Margaret. Commissioner Mendel, is there a, specifically you were asking for, for, just for clarification, resolution?
I'm just wondering if there's a rule of putting, you know, lettering along with the logo on a sign in Corder Madera.
Oh, in Corder, no, no, there absolutely is, is not. There's plenty of logos in, 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 all over town with, with brand names and whatnot. So if that's the question, we don't, there's no, clearly no prohibition in town against brands advertising with logos, except for cases where we have explicitly precluded that from happening.
I see, okay.
Which would be the rear of?
That's what I was referring to, yes.
That's next on our agenda, but right now.
I thought we should say what is current.
There's nothing, you know, inward facing or nothing that prevents B of A or anybody else from putting up something relative to their trademark, as long as it falls within the specific sign area included, except where it's expressly prohibited or.
Correct, I think that's a good way of putting it, thank you.
And so, is the update, so, anything else you want to ask?
Well, the other question was, when the original colors were decided for Macy's, wasn't that standard colors for Macy's at the, was that the standard color for Macy's at the time?
I don't know, again, perhaps the applicant would know that, but, you know, I think the, the colors that we see out there today are, are quite different, so I, I can answer that question.
So that would be before you were born, Margaret, so I think that.
I could tell you, the, the flagship store is, is, as you know, is one thirty-fourth store, Thirty-Fourth Street, and it's, I don't think they're a color, what is it, what is that made of? It's stone and.
Brick.
Brick and, those are the colors, so.
I just, I just, someone said that these are the standard Macy's colors, and so I thought, well, they weren't standard in nineteen eighty-eight or whenever.
Corporate rollout is different all the time, but downtown San Francisco, which is closed now, is white, right? They painted, they made that, there were two colors there, and now that last rendition was white.
Was white.
So I would see that's where we're going, so. Okay, so, is anybody here from the applicant to speak? Please, sir, stand up, identify yourself, and proceed with your part of the presentation.
Hi, all, my name's David Bostnecker with Macy's Store Planning and Construction, and the project manager for this project, along with an interior remodel that we're gonna start rolling out in, in March and April. Actually, all the carpeting is gonna be replaced, and we're also gonna be talking probably in a few months about retrofitting all the lights to LED as part of the energy conservation. But the idea here is, we're making an investment in Corder Madera. We were hearing rumors that Macy's leaving, we're not. We want to show the community that we are staying. We want to present the community with a new building, with our new colors, our, well, not new, we've had these for quite a few years now, but these are Macy's branded, white, and the rooftop, and bringing the signs to what match actually the monument signs outside the mall now, don't match our current signs. The new monument signs have the, the star, the red logo, which is part of our, our branding, that's our, our signage on all the buildings. We've also added the star as the apostrophe between the Y and the S. And the hope is, with the capital being from twenty eighteen, that I can knock this all out by February second, weather permitting. We've already started with all the repairs. I was actually involved with the opening of this building in nineteen eighty-five, and unfortunately, we haven't done adequate job on maintaining the exterior, and that's why we're, we're scrambling to keep up and make it look presentable and basically compete with dot com business and, and attract people to our building.
So, when you go into the, part of the application that speaks to the monument sign, that is changing here as well? Is that, am I correct on that?
That's, yeah, that's, that's in relation to the, the next application, and the color of the monument sign is changing, but not, none of the font.
Got it, okay. Not your problem, right? Okay, so durability, this was, what was the roof there originally?
Roof is metal, it's actually kinda, it's not in good shape. So the roof is a, a metal aluminum that's kind of an anodized that color, but it's fading. I actually got up with the roofing contractor, because we're doing repairs as well around the skylights to stop those from leaking. So the process is, we did this actually in a few stores down Los Angeles. We power wash, you etch sand it, you put a good hard primer on there, and then two coats of color. And that's my concern as well, because I live local and I drive by the thing every twice a day, so.
Right.
And that's one of the concerns, and that's written into our contract, the, the guarantee on quality and performance in the Sherwin-Williams product paint that we're, we're using.
Yeah, it's not, I don't know what the branded line is that's going on the roof specifically besides Sherwin-Williams, so there's a product name like, you know, Tough Shield or something, right?
Oh, you know what, that, I, I believe that's on, on your sheets. It's on the, the stucco, it's a poly.
Polyurethane?
Elastomasteric, I believe, is what they give to it.
Okay.
And that, that works with the, with the stone surfaces, with stuccos and everything. I can certainly get all the specs. I don't think I have that, my color and material stuff, but I have it in all the, the samples that were sent to us, and what we've been requiring, because.
Well, not that we can determine that the paint is the right quality, but we don't want a peeling roof paint, and we don't want it to look like.
We don't want that either.
The siding that has been decaying over there is a problem.
The west and south, we actually already started the repairs.
Yeah, I see that, right. Okay, so, anyone else have any further questions for this gentleman? Okay, Charles.
I did just have a question in regard to the roof paint. You, you know, you're talking about trying to have a low carbon footprint from the LED lighting and things like that. Is there a lot more sort of heat gain to the building and increased cooling as a result of this darker color on the roof?
No, it already, you know, it has a darker bronze color. I don't think we're gonna have any heat gains, you know. We're, we're gonna drop the amount of wattage from a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventeen thousand watts being used for lights, we're gonna drop to forty-two thousand five hundred. So if anything, our chillers are all gonna start backing off in our rooftop units, and I think are concerned, I, I, we're not concerned about the heat at all. That's only the small portion. The whole area up behind the parapet is the major square footage of the roof, and that's all the white. I'm not sure what the covering is.
It's a, it's a membrane behind that.
Yeah, there's a membrane up in there.
It's like it's pretty aged, so that, that was gonna be my other part of that. So, you know, I don't usually like getting involved in decisions about branding, because I think that's very well vetted in good institutions, right? But I do question black roofs in a, in a sustainable era where, you know, the, the right way to go is a white roof, right? Like, a light roof to reduce heat gain. We are in a temperate climate, so, you know, usually heating loads are the primary thing in households, but for a commercial, it's usually that they're still conditioning the space, so you, you know, I, I guess I, I had requested from the planning staff to, to have, to get, maybe give you an opportunity to speak to it. I mean, the, the move to black, just a lot of the stuff I've read is that it, it will affect the heat island effect and the thermal performance up to thirty degrees. And, and it, I have national articles that I.
Is this inside the building you're concerned, or exterior?
Exterior, but, you know, so we're a planning commission, so the exterior, you know, you're around wetlands and the overall heat effect of a large building on the sidewalks and the, the, the people can, can create, you know, when, if the wind blows it off and it's superheated, you know, it will have an effect. And so, I just, I just want to consider that. Right, so I looked at it, it's, it's not that, it's not that substantial. I just want to talk about it because I just don't, you know, but, I, so, I guess I wanted to say, from an aesthetic standpoint, it's fine. I think, though, when we evaluate roofs as the planning and, you know, decision-making board about whether it's a right move, I guess I'd like to see a dialogue about what its environmental impacts are with roofs. Walls, less so. It's my own personal discussion. But, so what I, I also saw that the, the larger portion of the roof is just aged, and it looks kind of a taupey tan, you know, and so in your repairs or your updates, was there any plan on repainting that, and could that be made white?
No, not, not on that roof. The only part, only parts we're having problems with, with leaking and the aesthetics are the angled metal roofing.
Okay. All right, so, so in your opinion, though, you don't think that there would be any kind of thermal change?
No, I mean, I kind of read the report, and it does say, you know, that science is looking at it both ways, because it says contradiction.
Getting older.
But due to a range of resultant, resultant radiant and thermal effects, this could actually contribute to the overall warming of the planet by going to wider roofs. So the science, when I read through the report, this actually refers to a whole new roofing membrane system, basically tearing the whole thing off.
Right, I wasn't suggesting the actual system, but there was a lot of reports, it was hard to pull, but just the general dialogue about lighter roofs versus darker roofs.
Yeah, cool roofs versus, yeah.
So I, I'm sorry that it took you down a farther road. I just, just in general, like, so, you know, so all the Macy's that you're redoing in Los Angeles, where it's an even hotter climate, you're still doing.
All throughout the country, Florida, Midwest, this is our branded color palette. This is what we're trying to get them all to look like, you know, because as you know, we have stores all different, you know, from Bon Marche to Lord &amp; Taylor, so we're trying.
Hard, because I, I get northern latitudes, you might want it black, right, and take, versus, you know, so, so I get that, that, you know, the environmental decision-making about branded colors is probably a very difficult one.
Part, part of the problem is, you don't really want to paint light colors over dark, because if it does fade, you'll know instantly, because you're gonna see that dark color starting to peel behind the white.
Okay, well, I appreciate you having a dialogue about it.
No problem, that's why we're here.
Okay, anything else for this gentleman? Oh, okay, go ahead, twice. Margaret, anything on your side?
For a question or a comment?
Yes, questions, right.
I, I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we're back up to, to Diaz here. Discussion points on this, the, it's color and it's the roof, so, oh, yes. Well, there is a gentleman here who might have a, something to say. So I will open it for public comment at this point. No, all right. No, all right, we'll close the public comment. Okay, then please, that's what I asked, if you would, yes. Jim.
Jim Robinson, 25, Ash, and I don't know, my comments, uh, essential to your discussion. I leave the, the diametrics and the aesthetics to the planning commission and the planning staff. Uh, I am concerned that, I think the town needs to do all it can to ensure that we accommodate those who are in the retail business in the town of Corder Madera, particularly since we most recently eliminated our storm drain tax in anticipation that our sales taxes would, uh, essentially result in an amount that would deflect the need to have that, continue to have that parcel tax. But I also think that as a shopper that doesn't like my kids shop online and still goes down to the store and likes to try to, and I'm not a fashion statement, you can look at me and see, but my, my jacket and my shirt and my pants are from Macy's. So, I do like to shop local and I, I would hope that we could continue to have that convenience, not only for, for us ulcers in the town, but also to, to ensure a continued economic base for the town of Corder Madera. So, that would be my one comment. I think sometimes we have a, a difficult time dealing with logos of corporate events. I, I had an English teacher on a planning commission one time refuse Toys R Us to come into town with their logo because the R was backwards. But nevertheless, there is a reason why they have these logos, there's a reason why they, they do benefit from them because people identify from them. Uh, but I'll leave those details to, to people on this side of the table, but I do think we should do everything we can to try to accommodate, uh, those who are in the retail trade to ensure that these brick and mortar continues to be offered here and be available to those of us who live in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Well said, all right, then that's the end of public comment unless someone else wants to jump up, we'll close it, come back up here and, um, Margaret, um, your thoughts about, A, the color changes and so forth in the signage?
Um, first, I think it's a great idea to be renovating and fixing Macy's. Um, and I was around when the store was first built and my children put their handprints in the cement.
Oh, wonderful.
And they had a T-shirt that said, "I lent a hand to the opening of Macy's." So, I, I'm happy with Macy's, I like it being there. I don't personally like the color choices and the colors. I think they're too, make too much of a contrast one to the other, but if that's the way that the larger Macy's brand is going, then, um, I accept it and I hope that it fits in with the rest of the, the village because I, I'm with Phyllis. I think even though it's a separate piece of property, it has to work with what's there because most people don't see it as a separate piece of property. Most people see it as the village, it's part of the village. And I did, when I looked around, notice that there are several places that are white and they do kinda stand out like a sore thumb. They're just, but if that's the way it's going, I, you know, I'm glad to have Macy's there. If I have to make a choice, I'd rather have Macy's there than not.
All right. Okay, that is, uh, the end of Margaret's commentary?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lee.
Um, so, in, in both of these paint proposals that I think we see tonight, I just, the paint samples versus the, the imagery is a little bit deceiving, right? Because this is really stark, it's white and black and when you look at it, it's more of a taupe and a, and a, and a black, right? So, I, I think that for, for review, it just, we've talked about it before, it really helps when the draw, like, and, and I wanted to see it when I got here and saw it in the imagery and the paint samples because the, the, the prints are a little bit different too and it ju, it just makes it hard. So, I don't think it's gonna be as stark as what we see there, right? I, I think it's more in line with what Macy's, and it's probably a deviation from the white that you're doing like in other store rollouts, or you're doing that plume on everything else.
He can't answer.
Oh, sorry. So, so, but I guess, you know, that, um, so, so I just wanted to talk about that internally. And then I, I like the contrast, I think it's a very contemporary and clean look. However, I also am an environmentalist at heart and, and I do take issue with just rolling out black roofs across the country, given the, the overall dialogue. So, from a kind of personal standpoint, I kinda wanna say I object a little bit. I, my heart can't let me totally embrace it, right? But from a, a branding standpoint and the signage and everything else, I'm okay with, I, I like it actually, I like the imagery, I think it's a fresh update. As far as separating it from the overall village or, you know, I, I look at its neighbors, right? And I look at, um, that is a monolithic building and honestly, I don't think that that's all-new cons, like malls that are being built or, or, there's some separation, there's this, it, it brings it back down to a human scale. Uh, and, and creating such a monolithic form, I, I think it, it's overwhelming and overpowering actually. And the only reason that we don't get more sense of that is because they gave it a whole muted brown that makes it blend in with the mountains and everything else. But the, you know, that thing is, is a big building and so, the way that they dealt with it on the other side of the freeway is that they do have a lot of color variation that separates and breaks up the massings, right? And we're talking about how it mixes with Maserick, but Maserick is only one part and then you have Nordstrom's which had, just redid their facades with new brick and stuff and they're probably wanna gonna keep it the color that it is. But you look across the way and there is a large kinda tan with other large white sec, you know, and, and I asked for that to be included, uh, tonight, so we might see it in the other one as far as a, a neighboring kind of juxtaposition and what we really are is a town, right? So, I, I just wanna, so, um, and, and how, how could we hold one side of the freeway to a, to a certain, um, expectation and, and, and kind of, and then see the other side, maybe even prosper and grow, allow branding and, and diversification while we, while we basically in my mind right now handicap the other retail environment? And so, so I just wanted to say that and in that way, then I think it's great, I think it's great to update the, the facade and, and see a reinvestment in Macy's as they start consolidating and understanding where their real assets still are. So, um, so I, I applaud that move as well and so therefore I think we should try to encourage it and, 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 and allow it, so. Um, that's my piece and, and I still don't know which, which way I would vote just from the environmental standpoint and I feel bad about that, so.
Um, before I ask Dr. Bundy to speak, I will tell you that recently I did some temperature testing of regular copper roof and it was a hundred and some, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty-five degrees just sitting there. And so, it melted the, uh, membrane underneath it and that's just plain copper. So, um, black, I don't know how mu, it's not gonna get that much hotter, you know, on a slope roof, not a lot. So, that's just my experience on that front.
So, you think it would be okay? I'm fine with the other diff, like that-
I don't think it's gonna be a significant difference.
Heat increase.
Right, you know?
Okay.
Although, yes, there is some, but I don't think it's enough to overload the units. I don't know what the roof line on the interior is compared to the slope of the roof because I don't think I've ever been in that part of Macy's, but in any case. Dr. Bundy.
I think Jim Robinson had some good points about the challenges to retail in the age of Amazon and online sales. And one of the things that I have learned being on the planning commission is the importance of branding, uh, from the standpoint of creating that brand that, uh, the retailers expect people to respond to, so I can make the findings.
Okay. Very simple, thank you. Phyllis.
I'm looking at the colors, I mean, there is a lot of contrast and I guess the colors are supposed to be the same as they have on their paper bags when they do have them in stock instead of the awful plastic.
You got the-
But looking at this, and I don't know if it has to be exactly the same or feel the same, I was thinking that this lightest color to be used by Maserick, which is close to this, you know, tone wise, but it blends in more with the, I'll call it black, the soft black, whereas this has more yellow and it, this tends towards the gray.
Let's not get too far down the road of comparison, but I understand your point, um-
That can, I, I don't know if they can, they would still have the same effect, it would match the color used on the rest of the Maserick thing. It wouldn't be that different than what you're showing here, except whereas one tends towards the yellow, you know, just like the difference in clays, they either go toward, the white clay goes toward the yellow or the gray, it would just fit in better and if that's a possibility or if it's in cement, that it has to be the same.
Well, I think that, uh, to this point, they have submitted those two colors and I think it's going to be, um, a thumbs up or down on it, um, on those two colors since that's their corporate identity and that's what they'd like to submit. Um, just a sec, so, you know, I think that, um, they're, they're, they stand alone to create an identity that they want and, um, we either accept that or, um, send it back. So, that said, um, you had something else, Charles, you wanna say?
Just, 'cause I'd add, so if it is, is that truly the brand, national brand?
He said it a couple of times, yes.
It is.
It is their colors that they, uh, are using everywhere, so.
Except for Thirty-Fourth Street.
So, um, you know, that's a decision that comes from wherever corporate Macy's comes from and that's what they've put forth, that's what they want. So, um, I, at this point, um, if we wanted to consider, um, asking them to go to a different route, it would mean reopening this and having the gentleman come back up to discuss it and send him, uh, with another color, but, uh, or ask him to submit another color, I don't think that, uh, he's in, he's not in a position to offer or agree to anything other than what's right there, I'm sure.
But if we can reopen that, it could answer a question. He can tell us whether or not there's ever a variable to fit into the environment in which the Macy's store exists. I mean, if we could ask him that question, if the ans, depending upon the answer is whether we vote aye or nay and, um, have some, ask for something else, so can you do that? Could you open it, so?
Just a possible suggestion, you could take the, um, you know, a straw vote of the commission if there's a desire to explore additional colors and if that, if there is a desire of the commission to explore additional colors, then you could reopen the public hearing and, and hear from the applicant.
Couple cautions on just the discussion is, um, as you all know, that what's before the commission is a design review with specific findings and some of the areas of interest or concern may not be part of the design review findings. Um, and then the second thing is the other color palette from the next hearing for the rest of the village isn't really a decision or before the commission at this time. So, to base this decision on something that hasn't even been heard or decided and a determination as to whether that is gonna be the color is also, um, I'm not sure before you at this time. So, again, I would caution to look at the findings and to look at what's actually, factually before you at this time.
Right.
I had the discussion on findings with Adam earlier today and he asked me where I found in the findings that we could discuss color and I did find it. I found it in finding number four and finding number six.
Yeah, we weren't concerned about the color, um, we think that that is well within the scope of the discussion.
Impacts of the valuation of color can also extend beyond, like, have a lot of different interpretations.
And that's just something that you just need to frame the, um, discussions about the other factors about color into that area of the findings.
And as far as your second comment, I could not agree with you more on it. I think that we had come before us when the agenda was put together, it was a mistake to have Macy's come before Maserick. I would have preferred to have Maserick come first. Yes, they are separate ownership, yes, they are separate buildings, but if we're gonna talk about the harmonious feeling between them, they don't have to duplicate each other, they have to be harmonious, I think the larger project, which will have more of an effect on the eye, should have been first on the agenda. And that, I mean, it can't be changed now, but I think it's something to remember for the future.
I, uh, hear your, uh, comment, Phyllis, and I understand why you're saying that. Um, I think that these are separate properties and we can look at them separately. Um, and I think it stands on its own merits. Um, and that, I think in looking at this, that we are looking at the same ti, at the same time, I think is appropriate, even though we can't really consider it, I don't think that there's that much difference. Uh, the, the Nordstrom building, the Restoration Hardware building, the rest of Town Center and now Macy's are all gonna have distinct exterior appearances that identify them, um, to, to customers, right? So, they have their own identity. And Nordstrom is so clearly different, the rest of the mall will be so clearly different. Macy's can have, I think, uh, identity that, um, strikes different. I don't think they want it to look like the other building and I'm sure if I asked them that, he'd say, "Yeah, we want a separate identity." Um, and that would be, um, my vote is to say that what's proposed is what we consider and, um, go from there. But, um, you know, if we wanna bring it back up, um, I thought I heard from the other commissioners that they would accept these, uh, colors as they are. Is that fair to say, Margaret?
Yes.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna reevaluate it, I don't think that that's-
So, there's, that's sort of the straw poll, so to speak, that says that we've got somewhat of a consensus here to move forward with those colors that are before us and that we could, uh, take this to a vote on those colors. Um, and that I don't hear anybody saying that there's a compatibility issue. I think that the colors that they're proposing distinctively call out what Macy's wants to represent itself as. So, it's, it's, uh, those two whites are not so different, um, and yet they're distinctive, there's a, there's a better contrast to the black and I think that that's what they're after, is a cleaner, more succinct contrast. That's just what they have. So, um, I would ask the other commissioners if they would, uh, like to bring it back or if they would proceed as we have it before us. And I think the, the other three commissioners have said proceed. So, that said, um, I, I appreciate your sensitivity to color, um, and that you have a, a different idea about having them be more conforming. Um, I think they want more distinction, so that's part of what's before us is the distinctive Macy's approach. So, um, anything else you wanna say about the signage or the, uh, colors?
I have no problem with the signage.
Okay.
It was basically the color being so contrasting and they were gonna follow through with having all the stores look the same, I'd rather have seen it look like Thirty-Fourth Street in New York.
Okay. So, with that said, if, if there, is there any other commentary or discussion point that anybody would like to make? Okay, then I would ask-
I have one.
Oh, yes?
On the, the proposed, and maybe it's just because the paint has faded, the, the very top ledge line, roof line.
Right.
So, that's a totally different look than, was the original supposed to be, and faded or?
I'm, I'm pretty certain, maybe get a nod from the applicant, that the, the cap on top of the, the parapet above the Macy's sign is the same black as the standing seam roof. Is that true?
Right, right, but on the original?
Original, um-
It wasn't, is that right?
It was the same color as the building at that point and so-
Okay, but it wasn't a separate color?
Then the wall, yes, but it is, from the building, no. So, when you look up there, having looked at that today, um, it was a match to the siding and so forth and so, they're gonna make it, uh, defined at the top. They're gonna paint that flashing dark on the top edge of the parapet.
And so, what I'm understanding is behind that dark edge, the roof goes down and there's nothing that's gonna be done to basically the main part of the roof that's-
Which is not visible from anywhere except Mount Tam.
And that's a light color, apparently?
It's a brownish, uh, gravel material.
Okay. Okay.
Do we hear a motion on this from any of the three commissioners or four commissioners?
In regard to Resolution 19-002, on the public hearing for design review, precise plan amendment and sign permit application regarding exterior painting of the building and replacement of the four existing signs for Macy's Department Store at 1400 Redwood Highway, PL-2018-0093-DRC. Move to approve.
All right, do we have a second?
One second.
Second. Margaret seconds the motion. All right.
Commissioner Ben, Commissioner Bundy.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Bendel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Metcalf.
Aye.
And Chairman Chase.
Does this have any appeal rights on it?
It does. That's why I was going to read the appeal statement. Following the action by the planning commission at public hearing or meeting, any decision of the commission may be appealed to the town council within 10 calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the planning department, and the fee is $300.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Look forward to fixing up the building.
Yeah, I see the, I see the work...
We do too.
Yeah.
Make sure you're shot.
Cut down some pine trees so they can see it better.
No, no. No, we're going to build a triple-decker parking lot on the corner of the property. So, never mind.
Isn't that what Pat wanted to do?
So, we'll take a break till 20 of...
They infected. We need to get those beetles.
Hi. Okay, so we're back on board, we're back live. The meeting is reassembled. So, item C on our new hearings tonight is 1618 Redwood Highway, the Village at Corder Madera, public hearing for design review, precise plan amendment and sign permit applications, PL-2018-0078-PDP, regarding exterior paint colors, including highway-facing elevations for the Village at Corder Madera, and revisions to the precise plan number 12001 for highway-oriented tenant signs and the monument sign at 1618 Redwood Highway. So, Mr. Boyle, this is yours to kick off.
Thank you. As we, as we discussed a little bit, this is, again, a separate application for modifications to the exterior of the Village at Corder Madera and the freeway-oriented signs. And I'll go through this PowerPoint presentation. Location, as I'm sure we all know, is at the, at the Village. And in terms of the project's scope, so the scope of the project is, first focusing on exterior paint colors, is to paint the exterior of the building which faces Highway 101, as well as some other walls, which I'll talk about in a moment, and to paint the walls facing Highway 101, these colors that are shown here. Heirloom Shade will be the, the color of the walls that are, have diagonal roofs and are, and are at, not at 90 degrees to Highway 101 is the best way to describe it. So, those walls will, which currently are kind of a tan color, will be painted the, I can't get the exact name, Heirloom Shade. And again, color samples are in front of Commissioner Metcalf to get an idea of what they look like, both in images as well as in color chips. So, these are some, this is one example of the area that will be painted. And here's another example of the area, which is the, the center part of the shopping center, and again, just depicts the, how, where the, the dark gray paint will be applied. And the applicant will, will certainly go into more detail in terms of why they've chosen these colors and their desired effect. And so, I'll, I'll leave that to them to discuss, to present. I did mention that there are other walls that they're also, they're also looking to paint and other colors, and those are found in your, your packet. Difficult to see on the slide, but I just wanted to show them on the slide, just to give you a point of reference. So, those walls are also proposed to be painted. Again, some of those facing east, some of them facing inside, inside the mall. There is also in the application, the applicant has mentioned that Phase 1 will be to paint the walls facing the freeway, and Phase 2 would be these other walls. And I'll leave that to them if they have specific timelines, or if you are interested in specific timelines of when that is supposed to occur. That, just trying to see if there's any other color exterior. That pretty much sums up the, the proposal for the color changes. Now, jumping to freeway-oriented signs, just a little bit of history, and there's, there's quite a bit of number of attachments in the staff report. I purposely dug those up so you could, so all could see the history of the freeway-oriented signs. When the center was originally constructed, as far as I can tell, there was no real sign program. I think there's maybe one sign facing the freeway that said, this is the Village at Corder Madera. Then in 2012, a simple shelf sign criteria was created, and that's depicted there on the right with the Baby Gap and Pottery Barn. So, that was approved by, by the planning commission in 2012. And then in 2000, between 2012 and 2013, some signs were installed that didn't quite meet the 2012 criteria and the ideas of the 2012 criteria. 2012 criteria were, were kind of vague, and so there was some wiggle room. 2013 came back to the planning commission, and the commission got much more specific. You specified that there'll be individually illuminated channel letters, there were specific colors of what the sign shall be during the day, and specific colors of what the sign, sign shall be during night. At night, basically, they're all, they're all to be white. The 2013 said size of the, the letters, and referred to a specific font, or referred to an image in terms of the font. Didn't say use font X, it just said use a font very similar to what's attached to the staff report from 2013. Also, that, that the sign shall be all in capitals. So, the, the scope, what the applicant is asking for tonight is modification to those criteria. In general, what they would like is greater choices in terms of color, the ability to use logos, but they do keep with specific requirements in terms of sign, size. So, there will be specific size requirements, and I'll, I'll talk about that in just a minute. So, this is just an example of what's out there today, upper left, and this is, you know, zoom in on the mock-up of what they're proposing of two types of signs. So, they, in your packet are the sign criteria existing and proposed, and they've highlighted what they, what they would like to change. And this is one section of it. And again, this just basically says, instead of just LED shelf signage, they would like applicants to have, use individual letters and logos, and, but not allow backer panels. And I can explain that if anybody needs to know what a backer panel is. Basically, a, you know, a sheet behind the letters, so that the letters will continue to be, you know, quote unquote, freestanding, like they are here. Talked to, and then another part of the criteria talks specifically about logos. So, and again, the, the red is to be removed, and the yellow is to be added. And so, in this part, they are proposing, requesting logos, fonts, and colors that reflect tenant identity, period. And so, pretty open-ended. They are also saying the address, the maximum amount of Calvin, which is due standard that planning commission has adopted. And then they also do specify this, the size of the logo and the size of the letters, as have always been specified. So, in addition to the logo, there will be a maximum height of that logo, as well as a maximum length of the logo. So, those are the proposed changes. In terms of the freeway monument sign, they are proposing repainting that as seen here. And again, in the staff report, they specifically identify which colors will be used on which part of the sign. Basically, the, you know, the body of the sign is going from that tan color to, to the darker blue, and the frame around the sign, the small signs, is going from the light color to, to a darker color. Also, I did notice note in the staff report that they're, they're requesting that these monument, the signs on the monument sign can also have logos and fonts and colors of the choices of the tenant. So, more or less free, you know, free rein, more or less, for this sign as well. I didn't, I didn't see any documentation that specified what the font and color and size of this sign shall be. Again, it was just, it was presented, it was approved, and it looked like that. And that's the way, that's the way it stood since, since 2012. Commissioner Lee did ask for some elevations of the town center, just to get a sense of what's happening across the street. So, I have those for you. Not all, but a fair number of the various east elevations. So, with that, staff has presented this material and request that the commission take in the evidence and the information and hear from the applicant and staff, and, I'm sorry, the applicant and the public, and direct staff on how to proceed. If you do wish to approve the application, there is a resolution attached.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyle. I know I have some questions about where the colors go, but I will start with commissioners and ask Margaret to start out with her questions for staff at this point.
When...
Would you pull the microphone down so we...
When a tenant wants to, I understand that Macy's in, in the monument sign.
Mm-hmm.
Macy's and Nordstrom's are the main tenants, even though we've, or I've just learned that Macy's is separate.
Right.
As is Nordstrom, yeah.
How do the other lesser businesses get chosen for that? And are they rotating? And...
A question for the applicant.
Good question. Yeah, that would be a question for the applicant.
Okay.
Anything else you want to ask about what we've just been presented by staff?
No.
Okay. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, this might be, you might not know, but with the, with the...
You need your microphone.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. So, with the monument, is it also that they would not have the colored backers on this? That it would keep the same brown, shared background? So, I, it looks like someone might know. So, that was good to know. So, there you go.
All right. So, that's another question for applicant.
And one more, one more for, so, what I saw with the town center was that we reviewed the individual store when they had the new signage proposal. So, within the Maesrich signage kind of agreement, is there any town oversight of each individual, or is it only Maesrich then has oversight of, you know, Microsoft and Tesla, and how that sign gets executed up there?
Right, that, the entitlement process for the village is that if one is creating, changing a sign that faces the parking lot to the east, such as the Gap and Charles Swab, most often those are coming, they're redoing the facade and they're changing the sign. So, in those cases, that, that is, a review process is very similar to what happens at the town center.
Okay. But on the other side, it's only within Maesrich that the final decision is made? Like, with, with, say now, with logos and colors and...
Right.
No, the freeway facing, the freeway facing, those are just automatic, no town oversight, just Maesrich approval. Is that what I understand?
Well, no, the, the freeway facing signs are all within Maesrich's property. We're not talking Nordstrom's and Macy's. And through, starting in 2012, there was, the sign criteria were created, and if, if one submitted an application and they met all their criteria that are outlined in the 2013 resolution, then that sign was just approved via building permit. Is that, I don't know if that was your question.
Right, but that was very constrictive, like, it was all that every, every single one was white, and it, it, you know, the color impacts and other type effects...
Right.
Were going to be the same. So, it was a, it was a rubber stamp. And so, in this proposal, it's that they're getting a rubber stamp to do logos and stuff, which we don't have much oversight over, that I've learned over time anyway. I just wanted to talk about if, if we're going to do that, what, what impact would it be? Would, would the town want more oversight? That's the only reason I bring it up. But that's a daughter of Iowa.
So, precisely, do we have sign, every time there's a, somebody wants to put a sign up, do we get to review the sign on the freeway side in the future?
I, I believe that, I believe, no. I believe the wish of the applicant, and, but this is the direction of the commission. The wish of the applicant is to staff, again, like on this slide here, so you've got those four criteria. Today, if an applicant came in and they met those four criteria and others, we would say yes to their sign. If this project is approved, as is, the lower box with the yellow, if you met all those criteria, you would get a building permit from the town for your sign. Again, I believe, I believe that's the wish of the applicant, but we can tease that out.
And in fact, I would just also note, you know, frankly, our signage ordinance also contemplates this exact approach, where there is a sort of a master, for, especially for sites with more than one tenant, a master sign program that sort of would allow for a master approval, so to speak. And then if, if all that criteria is approved by the planning commission or the town council, if that was the case, if, if a sign came in and met the master sign program, it would be submitted and approved through a building permit process, it wouldn't be reviewed again.
Thank you for that clarification.
Peter, may I clarify this further, since, I guess I'm the only one who was on the commission when it happened?
We can do that, but I want to, just, and I will help you do that too, because I have some things to contribute. But do you have any questions for staff about just the application right now?
I just have a question about, none of these are numbered. If you look at the plans that you have in the proposal...
Signs are a couple of them.
This, all right, the first page is the roof. I turn it over, and on the right-hand side, here, you can, I'm holding it up, make sure. Is this supposed to be what is currently there, or what is proposed?
So, so the two, I'll do it like this. So, the, the top half of the, of the piece of paper is, the, the upper row is proposed, and the smaller down below is existing. Kind of hard to see. And vice versa, on the other side, so the, the larger image on top is proposed, and down below is, is existing.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, because I was going to say, if the upper is...
If you turn to...
What is currently, no, if the upper was what is currently there, they are not following the rules. And that's why I was trying to clarify what it is. Nothing was marked. So, thank you for clarifying that for me.
If I'm not mistaken, the larger of the images is the proposed, the smaller of the image is existing in each one.
Yes.
Yeah, and that, that also coincides with the other images, like this one here. Larger is proposed, smaller down below is existing.
I want to be sure that they all were the same.
Any other questions about the color, or what's proposed, or what Phil has presented to us right now? Just questions.
Well, the question is, how many people in this room actually know the background of why they're all the same, as Charles asked?
Well, you and I know that.
And I don't know if that is comments or questions.
No, that's, that's to come. I just want to get clarifications out of the way right now, or any questions for staff. So, if you have... So if you have anything else you want to ask about the clarity of...
Not at this time. I just wanted to verify what I thought it was, to be sure I was correct.
We'll go to that. Dr. Bundy?
Not at this time.
Okay. So these drawings and photos, or the drawings are just a little confusing. But because sometimes you're not sure if it's shading or if it's paint in some of the images represented. So it's as if the items that are directly facing the freeway in flat are the dark colors. And then the boxes that are in forty-fives to the freeway are the lighter colors. That's the way it's sort of represented here. The plan view that shows A, D, and E isn't exactly helpful to me. But there's a shading that appears to be the flat walls. And anything below the boxes at forty-five is all the darker color, the industrial age. Right? So on this page of buildings, the boxes at forty-five are all the light color. And the lower structures that zigzag or are parallel to the freeway are all the darker color. That's what it appears to be.
Color B, correct.
And in the mock-up that was done on site, it's just one corner, so it's hard to tell. But it doesn't proceed. So then I'm clear that there is a fair amount of this darker color. And I think that this photo represents a good, represents well how much is dark, right? So in that photo. And the landscape is growing up against that. But the entry, center entry to the mall is the darker color that goes to the center plaza there.
Correct. The center entry from the west.
Okay.
And the applicant has additional slides that may shed some more light as well.
We will certainly pepper the applicant with questions, I'm sure. So I think that rather than revisit at this moment what we did in 2013...
Well, you weren't on the commission yet. You took Sloan's place, and Sloan had made your objections.
Yeah, so, and I remember the night very well. So, but I think it's the time for the applicant to make their presentation for us. So it's that Stan or who's going to stand up and do it?
I'll just start and then turn it over to Sudish.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Stan Hoffman, the property manager at the village. We are in need of a refresh. And the center looks tired. And we want to, thank you. As you see, we're requesting permission to repaint the center and to update our signage. We need the paint because it's in need of a paint job. And we need to change the signage because the signage is ineffective. You know, when you drive by the village, you have just seconds to see what's going on. And the building doesn't look like a shopping center. Some people think it looks like warehouses. And the current signs do not leave an impression. And our tenants who have the signs up there have told us that their signs are ineffective. And just the example we did with a Tesla lettering or the Microsoft logo, instantaneous recognition of those tenants, whereas right now in the white letters, they're just a blur. And they really don't work. You know, we've had quite a bit of community outreach. I've met with many, many people, a lot of the people that were opposed to the sign project in 2013. And without exception, there was no negative feedback on the sign program. On next door, that I was given, you may have been given some negative feedback. I got zero from all the people and groups I met with. And on next door, we originally proposed a brighter white that we thought was a little cleaner, a little crisper. The comments on next door was to tone it down. And again, we are part of this community and we are neighbors with the community. And the community asked for a toned-down color. And what we decided to do is we picked a color that's already being used in the shopping center at the Anthropology Store. And we tried to match it as close as we could for the buildings. And we think it's a very elegant, very, very nice color. You know, there is a long history. I got to see some of it when I printed this out tonight. And I urge you to not look backwards. You know, whatever happened in 2012, 2013, to me is irrelevant. We're here today, 2019. The shopping centers are an important part of this community. And we need to remain relevant. And we need to do things in new ways to continue to be relevant. And whatever took place in 2012, 2013, you know, I saw it from across the street. And there was a lot of bad feelings. I have to tell you, many of those people who spoke out against the sign project then have told me what's there doesn't work and what's being proposed looks very, very nice. I'm going to really, in a moment, turn this over to Sudish Mohindru, our architect. I first met Sudish in 1986 at Town Center. Sudish was the architect who did the Town Center renovations, starting, what, 1984? Eighty-four. And Sudish and I worked together until 2014, where we were both, our services were both no longer needed at Town Center. And so now we're both providing services at the village. And the reason we brought Sudish in is the community really embraced the Town Center. I hope, I certainly hope they still do. But what was created was pretty phenomenal with the colors, with the signs, with the uniqueness. And we want a little bit of that uniqueness at the village. We want to make sure our, as people drive by, they notice the center in a very tasteful way in those few seconds they have to register what they're seeing. And they come in and support our tenants. So as far as the specifics, I'd like to turn it over to Sudish, who, this is his vision as far as the colors and the signs. And Sudish will tell you the reason he chose what he chose. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Stan.
Good evening, members of the commission and the public. I am Sudish Mohindru, principal with SCFM Design Studio. Well, as Stan said, this is nostalgia for me. I came to this room first time in 1984. There were no monitors, obviously, in those days, and no one told you to turn your cellphone off. But when we did the Court of Midas Town Center, I do remember at those a few seen old pictures of Montgomery Ward and Cala Foods and all that. Those doors had to be open, actually, because there was, the fire department would say, you can't have that many people here. And people were standing outside. There were months and months of meetings. It was a wonderful experience for years, until the last incarnation that you see now. And that's, so I just want to be clear, I'm not part of the moving the clock tower renovation. Anyway, I do this for a living. All my projects are revitalizing downtowns, urban streets. We write guidelines. Our firm does. We are hired by cities to write signage ordinances, design zoning regulations for the main street revitalization and shopping center renovations. So I've been looking at this project for a long, long time. In fact, we would be, Town Center was just following the approval of this project. So, and quite honestly, I think, and I would hear comments from people in Marin County. I've also done work at Strawberry Village over the years. When it was Loxspur Landing, I did some work there and San Elmo and so on. And I would hear comments from people, and many people would say, oh, it's the one with the back to the freeway. I mean, this is just ordinary, people would say that. And so I think that just getting down to what we are working with today, when I was asked by Stan to work on it, I started looking at, all right, well, I know a lot about this building and I have a lot of thoughts about it. So I'll share some of those with you. To me, the buildings as they were designed were, there was obviously intent to make it low-key, turn the back was that their decision. But where I think it kind of failed, even its original intention, was that the shed buildings were supposed to be, the elements that broke it and to make, made it into a family of shed buildings. And if we, can I change?
Right arrow.
Okay. So, anyway, I'll come back to that. So I think that one of the things that, so what I'm trying to do now is to see through the use of colors, the tools we have right now to work with is color, signage, and landscaping. Now landscaping is the only, only element along the freeway that has been implemented recently. But it's starting to grow. We have new oak trees and we have new California peppers and so on. So I'm trying to keep all of those in mind and say, if I use that, that's my toolbox. How do I work? To me, I see these things together as one thing. But then I look at what's our objective? I think the objective is, and most people will agree, the objective is that we want this place, as Stan said, to be relevant today. And how is it going to be relevant today? Well, it's the, in today's world, where shopping can be done online and so on, what we're looking for is a place that tells people, signals immediately that they can experience communal life here. That's what you see on the Town Center when you're driving on the freeway. That's what you see whether it's Strawberry Village or Marin Country Mart, good or bad. But the idea is that you can experience communal life. You can be there. You can meet a friend. You can have a drink. You can have a dinner. You can shop. You can just learn something perhaps just by being in the community, in public life than in the private life. Do we communicate that? I don't think so right now. I think that's, so how do we communicate that? And what I mean a little more on that is, we need to communicate that we are open, we are friendly. This is not an office park that says you have to have a badge to go in. This is, anybody can come in here. And it's, and how do we do that? And one of the things, I think one of the commissioners used the word human scale. I think human skill comes in, and it's human skill is very important. And because generally speaking, the places that people, even big cities, people enjoy and feel they're friendly, is the ones that have human skills. A large factory does not have a human scale that looks identical from one side to the other. So working with those, with that goal, and working with the tools that we have, the color and the signage and the landscaping, all of those, there's a sort of method in our, what we are proposing, the light and the dark colors, and I'll go through that. So before I go through it, if you look at this picture, it's, this is what I mean by sort of the monolithic quality. So even though these are in the roof plan, as the bird would see it, there is more distinction in the buildings. But you don't really see it because the walls that are tying, that are parallel to the freeway are of the same color as the walls that are at a diagonal. So the net effect is a kind of a monolithic appearance. Interior, the other thing is that the interior is, looks like this. And another objective would be to bring some of that color, the clean, sort of the freshness on the outside also. The colors that we're proposing, so what we've come up with the color strategy is that the lighter buildings, the buildings that are significant, buildings against the sky, those are going to be the light color. And the dark color that you're seeing is really, it works with the landscaping, as landscaping, as it's going to grow, not only, there's two layers of landscaping, right here as well as landscaping here. So that two layers of landscaping, by picking a darker color, we want that to become sort of the darker base, so that the landscape color and the shadows of the bushes and the trees, they don't conflict with the lighter buildings. So that's sort of the base of the building. And then, and that's a more uniform base because the trees go in a linear fashion along both the strips. So that would be the darker color. Another objective in terms of human scale, I feel is, and this came up in the earlier discussion when we were having, is when you look at this, actually, I should go back to this. In fact, when you look at this, the distance from Macy's to Nordstrom is almost 1,600 feet. The distance between, if you leave aside Macy's and Nordstrom and just take the middle buildings, that's a thousand feet. That's three city blocks. So I'm always looking for elements where we know we cannot make this, we don't want to, it's not achievable, the sort of the collective collage that exists at the Town Center. That's a very extreme sort of solution in a way. But I think what we can do is make it so that it has distinct parts. And that's how we get human scale. So one of the things is that I would like Macy's and Nordstrom's to be slightly different color from ours. Not very different, but very different. And I would like even our buildings to have a distinct through color, a clear entrance. And the middle, right here. And so that's why we brought the dark color in. So by doing that, we are fragmenting this large building into components. It's not fragmenting to the point where it's Town Center, but they look like different buildings. It's the same building, but we want to, and in fact, it's kind of interesting because people who are familiar, and I've talked to people who are familiar with the center, once you know, you often, I know people, I do that, I go at the back and park, even though that's supposed to be employee parking. I can get closer to shops. I go to Microsoft Store a lot, and I can park there. So why not highlight that entrance? I think from that side, which will break the components into two parts. So that's one of the reasons, and I think this is very telling, why we did that. Another thing, by having the darker color here, is it contrasts with the lighter color on the inside. You kind of get a glimpse of the Gap and the Charles Schwab, those are very light colors. So you're going through this entrance and you get the light colors. And this, I won't elaborate too much on it, but except to keep in mind that the lower walls, a large part of them are going to be covered with the landscaping. That's not fully mature yet here. When it comes to signage now, as Stan said, they seem to be ineffective. And how do we, so I think the challenge to me is, we want to make it effective, but at the same time, stay very cohesive, if I can say, without being repetitive. And that's a balancing act I think we always have to do. I want you to keep in mind one thing... I want you to keep in mind one thing, which is that, in this thousand feet of stretch, which is almost three blocks, the way the signs are, they are at an angle. So when you're driving north, you are seeing only half the signs, unless you're cavalier and look back, you shouldn't, you might have an accident. But when you're driving south, you're seeing the other half of the signs. So if you take, and we're talking about eleven signs, if you take eleven signs, tenant signs, which means you're seeing only five in one direction and six in the other direction, that's five signs in, in seeing them like, thousand feet apart, stretched, that's almost, that's the same as seeing two signs per city block. Just to give you an idea of the, that there's, far from crowding, they, they are very far apart from each other. So that's one thing. The other is, and here is, oops, so this kind of tells you, and, and again, here, the, there's no contrast between the, the monument sign and the buildings behind. And so I just wanted to show you, that's why we took the darker color and put that on the, on the monument sign. So, so this is what I was talking about, we have sign, 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 that's five signs in the northbound direction, and six signs in the southbound direction. These are sort of, if you wanna call it before, existing condition below, and what happens with, the, the, there was discussion earlier, and always is, about logos and signs, it's been, it's been proven that we register shapes, and they're much easier. Apple does not have a sign, they have a logo, and that's all, that is their sign. So logos, the signs, and there are many other examples of that, it's not just Apple. We have Target, a lot of times, they do not use the words anymore, they just have the bullseye. To them, a bullseye is more effective than saying Target, because that distinguishes them, because you can read T in somebody else's name, the T is in Tesla also, but circle is, 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 no one has that. Chevron, you, you can tell when you're driving, is this Shell or a Chevlon? I don't read it, I identify it with, is it the yellow shell, or is it the Chevron? REI across the street at Corder Madera, I was part of that design when it happened, and the, the sign, and we came and we convinced the, the community, it didn't fit within the guidelines, because there's, there's a very short name, REI, but the tree is part of the name, and the mountain is part of the name. Now, do you call that a logo, or do you call it a tree? How, how can you separate? You cannot dissect the logo from their name. REI never does one or the other, it's all sort of connected together. So I think that becomes important, and as the landscaping grows a little more here, we are gonna have more obscuring of the, the, the signs. And by obscuring, I don't mean complete obscuring, branches you will see through, that's when it'll become even more important, if you can see a part of the Microsoft logo, and the rest is covered, the name gets covered with, with the branches, the oak trees, well, you still registered it, you don't have to see the whole name. So having individual fonts is just, it's a proven thing now. Airports are doing it, where when you're driving by, it used to be the airports had a same font for, at the pickup area, for, or the drop-off, by the curb side, for all airlines. Now they're changing that through the logo, because as a driver, you, you, you're nervous, do you have your bags, and, oh, did I bring my wallet, my ticket? You don't, and you're looking, and you're trying to read alphabets much harder than if you had just, you know, you recognize United Airlines, and so you skip the others and you go there. So I think that's the important thing.
If I may interrupt you for just a moment, I, I didn't set a time limit for you, but I need to, and I need you to, bring it to a conclusion.
Sure, about two more minutes, maybe?
Okay, that's fine.
Alright, thank you.
And then we'll have to vote on whether we can continue.
So, so I think that's, that's what you're seeing here, with allowing people to do individual sort of signs, and how that would help us in, in the whole process. And I'll go through these quickly, because you're seeing it probably for the second time now, it's also in your packet. Just last thing I wanna say on the signs, is that we do, to us, quality is very important, and, and that is the nature of this, the village, is we wanna maintain a very high standard of signage, so few things we've added in the guidelines, is what the, how these signs are made. And there's a technique that is an expensive way of doing it, and we want all of them follow the same technique. So here, I come back now, just saying, the arguments for being different, but now I'm gonna make the arguments of, of being consistent. So the consistency is, they're all pretty much the same height. I say pretty much, they're all two feet maximum, the only reason somebody might be little less, they can't be more, is because if their name is too long, we also have a length limitation. Then the only way they can do it is by having a slightly smaller sign. But the quality of sign, the details of the sign, so even the fonts are different, but the mechanism of how they're made is very consistent. We have a consistent system of how they go on the rail, so we believe in that, and that's the balance we're trying to strike, between individuality and consistency. Here, this is the last, I think, slide showing the monument sign. I do wanna clarify one thing, that may have been misunderstood, at least I misunderstood it, but we're not proposing any altering of the signage.
Of, of any of this.
That signage, that signage will be consistent, it's not gonna be red, blue, green, based on their logo, it's what you're seeing here.
Okay, that's, I understood it to be different, thank you.
Thank you. I will stop at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we are here at nine twenty-five. I want to also get Jim up here, if he wants to make a public comment about this, since he's been so patient about this. And so we're still on the open side of the public hearing here for a bit, but because he might fall asleep back there, I wanna give him the opportunity to get up and make a comment. So I'm gonna open it up for public comment right now, and it, we'll keep it open for a while, we'll bring the applicant back up for some other questions, so.
Again, Jim Robinson, Ash Avenue, Corder Madera, and thank you for the opportunity, and I appreciate your patience as well, and I'm just reminded, being this meeting, been a long time, been a planning commissioner, the amount of time you spent, and your homework, and your questions, and I applaud you, and thank you for the good work you do for our town, whether I agree with you or not, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I don't, again, I don't have any particular concerns about the signage by color or the lighting. As Mr. Hoffman knows, I was abhorred when they destroyed all the landscape that used to block these buildings from 101. And I thought that the landscaping that originally was done was rather marginal, and I think that while it is growing, and I do think it is improving, that I would wanna make sure that it continues to do that. It's almost unheard of to see a shopping center be developed in this day and age, where you drive down their freeway and see car bumpers and car lights and things like that, usually they're bermed and landscaped, that was going on in the sixties and seventies in the state of California. I don't know how that didn't happen here in, in Corder Madera. But I would encourage the town, or the, the village to continue to improve the landscaping. With regard to the lighting, I don't know, that's gonna have a tremendous impact, there are those of us that do live on the hill that can't see Macy's from our home, I can see the village, I can see the Town Center, and I would hope that if there is significant lighting, and just a brief story, when we first bought our home in nineteen ninety-seven, our home overlooks the entire bay, we can see from Greenbree to the Berkeley Tower on the top of Ash Avenue. And the brightest lights, before we put in Venetian blinds, were the lights from the San Quentin. The brightest light now is the Town Center clock, this huge cat's eye clock. So when I'm watching my Warriors game, which I'm missing tonight, I can't see the TV, because I've got these three large round things staring my face, then four vertical lights. And I know at the time they put up that light, they were talking about maybe having some sort of, of timer on it, or something they could turn, I think Commissioner Metcalf remembered that discussion. It's still very bright at night, so I don't know that we'll see these lights, I don't think there'll be a problem, but I do think that, just because the way the shopping center is designed, I don't know that opening up that entrance at the middle is gonna do much. I think most people park on the other side of the shopping center, they might not be aware of the, the open spaces there, and I think they'll continue to do so. But I think really what people are after is what I call product and proximity, this is the only high fashion that I know of that's centered in Marin County. It's certainly, it's proximity to a lot of people, as myself, as I mentioned, and I hope that we continue to be so, and I hope that we continue to be there to continue to support our town. And if these logos in the minds of the retailers are gonna help that, then I, I support that. But I would leave, again, the details, the color, and the design, and the size to the, to planning commission, but it is a concern, and I would hope that they can do what will help benefit the appearance and it, continue to attract people to, to that center. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate your patience and your words. So, for the presenters, I know that we're going to ask you some questions. I want to have the commissioners look at this in two elements, if that's something the staff can also support. We have colors and we have signage, and they're really issues, but they're in one application. So if need be, we can, you know, look at one, and I'd like to get colors out of the way, in one effort, and then talk about signage in another effort. So with that said, and when it comes to colors, the applicant, it's still open hearing, the applicant can address any questions that we have regarding colors. So, Phyllis, I'll start with you, and you pick who you want to address your question to about colors.
These are just questions now, not comments?
Correct, right.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. All right, it's apparent to you where they go, what the layout is, all of that.
I think it's quite clear, in that, I mean, what I have a problem with, but it's not really the color, but it may be part of it, I don't know, as long as you want me to ask something, is the opening up, that rear parking lot, the one that faces the freeway, was really supposed to be for employees, it was not, it was not for the customers, and I don't know if opening up that area that the architect was talking about is the right way to go.
I think he's just saying that, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you're just saying that the way you're coloring it changes the perception of the entry, it's not a, a change in the sizing of it, it's not a change in anything else, he's just trying to create a visual.
But I am saying it was not established as an entry for you and me, it was established as a way of employees to get to their stores.
That was a discussion, it wasn't a condition of approval.
I know, I'm just saying that I question whether we want to encourage people back there now, because remember, it's employees, it's deliveries, there's a lot of stuff that goes on back there.
There's, it's, it's customers and employees, I'm out there and I see employees go out there, but now the employees are supposed to get relegated to the parking lot, the gravel lot, so to speak. But now, I watch employees come in and out of there, and if you can find a parking spot over there, you're lucky. So it's fully utilized, because it's closer to many other shops than some of the other parking on the east side. So, but they're deliveries, and the place is highly congested. But, you know, that said, that's, that's a, if you're okay with the way the colors are, or maybe you're not, but if you have questions about it, then let's ask those.
No, I, I like the colors.
All right, Dr. Bundy, colors.
I had a question on the outer walls of the building, not the, not, not the vegetation really along the street, but you talked about some landscaping that would cover those, are we talking about creeping fig on the walls themselves, or more just the plantings that are there?
Just to clarify, the, the darker color is going on some freestanding low walls that are about seven feet high, that hide the trash and all that. There are, most of them have landscape areas in front of it, they have shrubs, it's a combination of the two. We're gonna have some vines, and we're gonna have some shrubs that are two or three feet, rock rows and things like that, so I'm talking about both, really.
Okay, thank you. For a point of clarification, that, that's not in the application at this time for any more planting, correct?
No, but, but the planting is already there.
It is there.
It's getting bigger.
I recall asking the applicant at the time, are you gonna put any fig or anything on the wall? And they said, no, there's no intention of that, and to this day, there is none there. And I don't expect that they'll put any there to cover those walls. That was part of the discussion at the time. So, that's, that's part of that. Mr. Lee.
Hey, so I have some broader architectural questions for the architect and design. So, I guess, what, how would you define the architectural style that you're working with, with the existing building? Like what architectural style does that, does this original building fit under? And then what artistic style are you approaching it as far as breaking up the geometry? I'm curious as a designer.
Right, well, I, I would define this as, it's a, it's a larger scale, commercial version of what was implemented at Sea Ranch, I'll call it, which is kind of Bay Region, simple, large shed roofs. It was blown to a much bigger scale, but it's contemporary, and, and at that time, it was modern, it was contemporary, and it was, it used wood, sort of a natural material for siding. Some of those, that, some of the wineries that have done this kind of thing generally leave the wood unpainted, so that the whole thing has a real barn-like appearance, so, so I think that's what it is. How we are working with this today with the limitation, how other tenants have worked with it, the gaps and others, is that they have treated the, the building as a kind of a simple background, as a, as a background, and then they have put their energy in, rather than decorating the entire building, just doing the storefronts, so that you keep your eye level down. Now, from the freeway side, we don't have that, that's actually one of the reasons, I feel, to highlight the entrance, where we, we have less of the barn effect, but it's much more contemporary, this, for example.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop, so, so you're, what you're saying is, is really you're using this darker blue color as a, as a movement and a, and, and the human scale, in the same way that on the other side, it's more broken up, but it's the same kind of shot, okay?
Exactly, I, I wanna fragment, and I wanted to say that the, because it came up, it's not so much that I want people to find this entrance, those who are parking there, well, they'll find it. It's that when people are driving on the freeway, I want them to know that this is not a monolithic set of barns, because if you look at it, at the end of the barns and the beginning of Macy's, or beginning of Nordstrom, you don't have a straight shot. So if you're going on the freeway, this is the only place you have, perhaps not a driver, passenger, because they're looking on the side, who can get a glimpse of what's inside.
Right, I, I got that, so I, I was gonna talk about that later. It's the perception from the freeway for an entrance to the overall campus he's looking for, not the human scale in that move.
Right.
But I think, you know, I was trying to think of, like, is it, it's, it's a more artistic move than I think you would do over at the Town Center, right? The Town Center's postmodern, you break it up, actual individual buildings almost in this big monolithic thing. So it, and, I, I'm just trying to understand what it, what the intention was, right? Because the original building, yeah, it was kind of a Sea Ranch thing, the color, you're picking the blue, it, it's something that I see coming out of Napa Renovations, higher end kind of establishments, right? So I wanted to establish to the community and myself, that that's the criteria in which you're working under, right? And where you're trying to take the, the center. You know, and, and that, it's not the same kind of postmodern moves of breaking up a big mass that you would find across the way, it's a different approach, it's more of It's more of a minimalist, you know, abstract color theory with some movement that's going through it, right? So I, I get that. And there was some public comment about colors, you know, I want to get into the Fauvist, it's not a Fauvist movement, art move that you're making, right? Like, so I think that's important to, and then, and then the other thing is, is just from a color and evaluation, originally, this was a large building. It seems like the muted tobes and the greens match with the hills. We were trying to hide it. And I think that talks about the town center, that the town's kind of small-town approach to who, as an identity, we've always seen, right? But the dialogue now is that we see it as an asset, and we basically want to accentuate its, it's the wealth that it can bring to the town as a, as a retail center, right? So, and by branding it as kind of this Napa higher-end thing, that it is an improvement. And that, it, that's why I'm digging into the bigger move that you're going at, and how we should, as a town, maybe understand it and frame it. And I just wanted you to.
I, that's the correct assessment.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Charles. Margaret, do you have any questions about this color issue that you would like to?
I had a question to address to Mr. Hoffman.
Okay. Stan is available.
And you had said that you met with town groups when you got comments about this? Is that recently?
I, well, we met with many individuals, and we met with the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm on the board of the, actually, I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce, but I'll disclose that. But we met mostly with individuals.
And who, for instance?
Phyllis Galanis, Jonna Hale, Mr. Robinson. There's about a half a dozen others. George Topper.
Okay. I got the impression that you had held meetings, but that's not the way it.
No, no. We put, we put, there's posters throughout the center. We, 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 we did a story in the Chamber of Commerce newsletter that I believe goes to most of the residents in Corder Medera.
Does it?
And, and again, the, the feedback was positive, with the exception of the original white color, which.
And how many people would you say you did speak with?
Individual, individual, about a dozen.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no other questions.
So I think that, I, most of my questions have to do with signage and so forth, or we have some discussions. But I would like to take, as Phil said, a straw poll of the commissioners about the colors. And I'd like to see if we have a way of, if we wanted to, we could say this is acceptable to go forward. So, I'm going to start on my right over here and see how you feel, Phyllis, about the colors, and if you would approve them as submitted or not.
I definitely would approve them as submitted. I think they are quite attractive. I think they are harmonious with each other, and it's a good selection.
Okay. Thank you, because we're going to run out of time here, I think, and so I want to at least be able to move forward with part of this in the hands of the applicant, knowing where we stand, and that we don't have to come back and visit it.
Bob? Go forward.
Okay. Charles, your thoughts?
I'm good.
You're good. And Margaret?
I wouldn't approve them.
You would not approve them.
I think they're too dark, and I kind of like the idea of them being more harmonious with the surroundings.
Mm-hmm. I understand. It makes a stronger statement, and I think that part of their reason is to make the center stand out.
I think if I had to walk through that, I wouldn't come in.
Okay. All right. So we have sort of a four-to-one straw poll here in favor of the colors at the moment. And I understand that I've, I've had some concerns myself about that very issue, and as I look at the consideration of revitalization of the mall and leaving it the same, I think that it does require an upgrade. I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, we've got a comparison that you guys have brought up, and one is to Larkspur. And of course, at Larkspur, they've done a complete redo with a freshening philosophy in white, and they've also done it with somebody approving some enormous signs over there. But the center is beyond successful now, and it's, it's a victim of its own success to some degree. I don't pretend to know what will happen in five years, but when the train lands, it's going to be even worse. I think that these colors are, they're fine, they're good. They'll clean the building. That's great, you know, and that's part of it. There's other issues. The landscaping was a problem when it was installed, and we came back to Mesa Ridge and said, you gotta fix this, which they did, and it's going to grow up, and it's going to hide the cars some more. It's going to happen. It just takes time, because it's really slow growing, but I already can see that the hoods of the cars facing the freeway are not visible for most of that. But there's some other issues that I found over there relative to the center. So I think that we're good with colors at this point. So now we can go into signage. We're going to vote in 15 minutes whether we want to continue this discussion tonight or call it a day at 10:00. So we do it 30-minute increments, so we go to 10:30, and then to 11:00 if we wish. And before we get to that point, Adam, I want to just check with you about the future agenda items, and if we have to continue this, is it conceivable to put it on the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Fabulous. Okay. So I'm going to throw out a couple of things for the commissioners to consider in their thoughts, and we're going to have you up to respond to some things about this. And as we've discussed signage with the town attorney and other people, we know that directory signs are not the same as storefront signs. So on a storefront, we have the square footage limitation, and that's directly related to the square footage of the establishment. And we've looked at these such that a sign in a different place, like the monument sign, is not a sign that qualifies in the same way as a sign on the front of the establishment. That's fair to say? Okay. So that a sign in another location, monument sign, let alone the sides of these buildings, can, may or may not be able to be looked at differently.
Are they part of the establishment today?
I think that we have a tremendous history of what happened in 2013, and how we got here, and to where we are. And right now, we have something that is solid, is accepted by all the players, and, you know, that's what's been there for five years. So I remember the night, the meeting, and all of that, and Phyllis will be able to chime in with this. I think that, Stan, you've spoken to some members of the community, I've spoken to some of those same members as perhaps Phyllis, and we have different recollections of some of those conversations, or a different pronouncement from those individuals to us versus you. So nothing is on the record for any of that. So we're here tonight talking about it, and that's all that we can really talk about, because there hasn't been a study session, there hasn't been any public comment prior to tonight on this. So that's where, we're stuck with, you know, what we are emailed, or what's in the record right now, and what Jim has put for us. Never have, I just want to point out a couple of things. Not all 11 signs have been used to date. Is that correct? Right? So there's only about six, seven, something like eight up right now? Okay. And is that because nobody wants to pay the rent, or because they, they don't, what's the reason that all 11 signs have not been used to date, you know? Yeah, would you get up, please?
We have two additional signs that are on hold, waiting for the result of tonight's meeting, and we've let, we started this process, what, almost six months ago? And we've told those tenants to, who want to do something different as what was proposed, to hold off. So we'll have all but maybe two done after this process is finished.
Okay.
And, and Microsoft is, if we aren't able to give them a logo, they're taking their sign down. They said it's, it's not effective without their logo.
All right. Okay. So with that said, I have a dilemma here of whether to, you know, launch into some of the history of this as a part of the public hearing, because then you could respond to it, right, at some point. But I think that it, this is an unusual case, and I think that some statements from the two of us who were there that night, and then perhaps you guys can respond to it, is would be appropriate to consider this properly, because it's very closely watched, and I know that there's a lot of emotion out there in the community about it. So I do want to keep it open for your response to whatever we recall, and then what we might say. But if you, you don't have to stand there for this next part of it. I think I want to check in with the other three commissioners right now before Phyllis and I might recall things. So with that said, we at least get some of that off the table a little bit. And Bob, you've been to a lot of these, and I'm just wondering what your feelings or expression about this signage proposal is as it stands now.
I really appreciate Peter putting so much documentation in there from 2012, 2013, and the background on that, because it really did give me a good sense of what the concerns were at that time, and what the issues were. And I believe that 2019 is a lot different than 2012 in regard to the way malls function. We heard a lot about that with the RH proposal about what makes a successful mall, what makes a mall something that's a benefit to the community, and what ends up failing and turning into something else. So I think, as Jim Robinson talked about, the online, online sales and, and Amazon have really changed a lot about this, and malls and retail have had to respond much differently than they did seven years ago. One of the other issues that was brought up was the issue of the landscaping at that time, which was in terrible shape, as I remember looking at it. And that's really much different at this point, and softens the whole look of the buildings, and I think of the signs that are going to be there. I think the signs are part of branding, which we've all learned a lot about, and I'm willing to accept the signs with colors and different fonts as part of the branding of the individual stores.
All right. I'll ask you about that in further detail. Charles?
What Dr. Bundy said.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm open to the signage being, I wasn't part of the 2013, I had just moved to the community, and I do find that that signage is ineffective, and they are trying to rent it, and it is a shopping center, and the goal of a shopping center is to sell stuff. So anything to enhance them to shop, but as long as I don't feel it's detrimental to the community. Given that across the street and across the entire length of that entire freeway, every other shopping center and facility is allowed to have colored signage, is a, is an insult to this shopping center, and it's some kind of, you know, individual attack, I think, unfairly on this center, given all the other criteria. The reason I asked about whether we would have to review each sign is because I see that each one has some sort of uniformity, and when we do have the individual signage, things come to us a lot of the time, the type of things that, you know, we'd like to talk about, we really shouldn't, and I think that the things that we should talk about are all encapsulated in the, the regulations that Mesa Ridge would hold them to. So I don't want to waste the town's time, honestly, was the reason that I had asked that. But I do get that the town has this fear of that, and wants to at least have a public dialogue about colors and lighting and stuff like that, right? And, but logos, we just get beat up. And, and I think the logos are really important, and, you know, the apps on my phone are a lot different in 2019 than 2012, so, you know, it's just, and, and the retail has to deal with that fast-moving environment. So, you know, if in four years they change their mind and do something new, like, we need to continually refresh and allow them to, to respond to very rapid change in the environment. And so that's why I can support it fully, as well as the colors, so.
Okay. Thank you for that. Margaret, your thoughts on that?
I, I agree with most of that. I think that also, I mean, I've been struck by the enormity of the Restoration Hardware Building going up, and I think unless the stores, the individual stores, have some personality themselves, that shopping center is going to be the Restoration Hardware Shopping Center pretty soon. And I think that the other stores have to develop more of their own personality, just to, to sort of compete with the image. And so I think that, I like the idea that it's going to be controlled in the construction of the sign, that they're nice quality, that they're within a certain size range, but I can see them not being useful the way they are. I want to say one short thing about the landscaping. I never was aware that there was even a landscape plan, because it's so pathetic. I really think that in Marin County, with the natural areas we have around us, both shopping centers could do a whole lot better in landscaping. It's not as expensive as signage, I'm sure, to put up trees and bushes that won't be choked out by the, you know, highway fumes. We could, we could do a lot better with that. I really believe that. I don't, and oak trees don't grow very fast either.
Right.
That's my two cents.
All right. Thank you. All right, Ms. Phyllis. It's time to go back. We, in five minutes, we have to vote if we're going to go forward. But I think that I would leave it to you to start off with a, a summary of how we got to where we got, or what you want to say about where we got, and what the history was.
When it was first built, it purposely did not allow signage on the freeway side. I do not know why. I just know that was part of doing it. In 2012, and it wasn't owned by Mesa Ridge at the time, I can't remember the name of the guy who.
Han.
Yes, Han, right, because I was in redevelopment negotiations with him for the place up in Nevada, and he would report what he was having happen down here. In 2012, it came up to have signage, and there was a big discussion, I guess a lot of it did not get written down at the time, because you just had very bare requirements that signs would be put up, and there was a lot of, the community was really upset. Change is difficult for people, and I certainly believe in evolution, but there are times I worry that we're disproving Darwin's theory in how we're evolving. And the first sign that went up, and I don't remember.
It was North Face in red.
Thank you. North Face. And it was this bright red sign, and all the you-know-what got started. So it came back, and part, believe it or not, part of the plans and stuff were missing, the ones that were in color and not in black and white. This is prior to Adam, by the way, so, nope, I think he was not taking care of things. And luckily, Sloan, who had been on the commission at the, in 2012, but had moved on in 2013, he's never thrown a piece of paper away in his life, and I asked him, do you have any of the files from it? And he literally had to bring in a box filled like this. He said, I think he gave me two boxes to go through, and I went through, because I remembered there had been a I remembered there had been a colored picture, you know, photo, of what the color should be in the font and everything on this signage. And I found it in Sloan's collection, and got it straightened out, and we looked at it again, and that's when Bruce Mace, who was the chair, said, "We cannot have all these different things." I mean, we had the room filled, if you remember. And he is the one who sat there and said, "Well, the buildings are painted X, and the trim is painted Y, and that's how it's going to be, the signs are going to be in the Y color, the trim color, which does blend in," I'm not denying that. But I am fearful of what kind of doors we are opening. I mean, I heard from some people, who I guess you had spoken to, that there was a discussion of keeping the font, but using upper and lower case. Some could, you know, the businesses can decide whether to have all uppercase or do it in upper and lower case. Not that there was going to be a change of font, or that each store would do differently. The idea was, when the signage was put up in 2012, and then continued in 2013, was more of highlighting the center, that this sign, which was also very controversial, by the way, the monument sign, which I always thought was great, and still doing, like it even better with the dark color, by the way, that that would take care of announcing, "These are stores," and it was going to be the two, you know, Macy's and Nordstrom, and the other four were supposed to be the restaurants. So that's where it came to. Now we've got this new thing, and one thing I would like to finish with is, this is the type of issue that should have come to us as a workshop first, and that would have been the applicant's responsibility, it's not the responsibility of our staff to say to do this. Because, Stan, you had your discussions with people, and other people had discussions. I think there should be a workshop where the people are in this room, and we're all hearing the same thing at the same time. And I think to make a change like this, which has been so controversial in the past, without doing a workshop first, I think was a big mistake.
Phyllis, we have to vote whether we're going to go forward for 30 minutes at this point, so we can do a voice vote, if we want to do 30 minutes at this time.
I personally would prefer to put it off for two weeks and give us some time to look at this some more, and study it. I mean, we got it on Friday. And so I would, you know, adjourn. We've approved the colors, and that's...
In essence, yeah.
That's done. And I think we should put it off for, you said it, two weeks, that we could have it on the agenda then?
Yes, two weeks is, yeah, two weeks from today, the agenda is light, if not empty.
Okay. So that would be my preference to adjourn now.
What I would propose is that, I'll let you finish your recollection, I would go in and say a few minutes of things, and then we would adjourn.
Okay. But as far as continuing on and taking some actions, that we should adjourn. We still have minutes to go over and stuff like that, too.
I think that, yeah, it's, I think that I'm going to ask for some consideration of the applicants in my statement, so to speak, about possibilities. So Bob, how do you feel about ending now, or just going another 10 minutes or so?
I'd go another 30 minutes.
Okay. Charles?
I'll go 30 minutes.
Margaret?
I'll go 30 minutes.
Okay. All right, so we have an, an agreement to at least get through another sort of part of discussion about this. Okay. So, that said, Phyllis, I don't want to, I didn't want to cut you off there or anything.
I mean, I would show up at those meetings debating whether I should be wearing sackcloth and ashes or armor, because it was a very upset community, and I was the newest member of the commission at that time, and was trying to figure out, "Why is everybody so angry?" You know? And it wasn't the commissioners, it was the people who came to the meetings. And I don't want to see that again. I would rather have it, open discussion before, you know, we take a vote, type thing, on the signage.
Why were they angry?
They did not want the signs, they, it really became a big issue when the, what'd you say, Northridge? Is that the name of it?
North Face.
North Face.
North Face put up the red sign. That, you know, people knew, they didn't want the signs to begin with, the people from the community who had been here for a long time. They accepted the fact they were going to be signs, but didn't expect all of a sudden to have this big red thing at them, and that's why there were letters, emails.
Let me ask a question to that.
Hang on a second.
It, it has to do specifically with that one, though.
About?
Was it a larger sign than what they have now, even though it was, it wasn't just muting the color, was it also that it was a bigger sign?
I'm going to get to that.
Yeah, Peter, we talked about that. But the idea was, that's when it was decided, the signs would be the same, the same font, the same color, no logo, and that was tough getting through. And I'm not saying that's what we have to do today, but I'm just letting you know that this is not something that all of a sudden is easy to do, because it's all going to happen again, and we better be sure of, do we want logos? Do we want to have different colors, or do we just want to have, you know, different fonts? If we have different colors, you know, the, the feeling always was that the interior signs would be what represented the stores, and as I say, I really do not know, and never did find out, because I asked people, and I never got the same answer twice, why it had been decided back in the mid-'80s not to have any signs on the freeway side. I don't know what the, and I'll just end with one thing, what you said, Charles. When you talked about a town center, you see all the signs and stuff. What you're looking at a town center facing the freeway is the front of stores. What you're looking at here is the back, and they expanded the parking around 2012, two, I guess 2013. This had been just one strip of parking, and it was meant for the employees, and when they expanded it, I think three times we had them restart that landscaping. I remember at least two, but I think there was a third time, that they put in these plants that died, and they were a real mess, and you...
Mr. Boyle and I were a part of reviewing the landscaping.
You went, I know, and they even fired one landscaping firm and brought in another and stuff, and the whole idea was that people would not see the cars, because there had not been a strip of cars facing the freeway. There had been just parking facing the building, and as I say, the deliveries and stuff. And when they expanded here, the whole idea was you were not supposed to see the cars.
Right.
So Peter, I'll let you take over now, I think I hit on some of them.
Yeah, you did. So thank you very much. Margaret and other commissioners, you know, when you read the notes, I can remember everybody, almost the people in front of us at that moment, saying these things about the possibility of signs. And what happened was, it's hard to see in these xeroxes, but the North Face sign went up at two foot, but it was red. And then the Ann Taylor sign went up, and it was black, but it was really bright. And they were all in the right heights, but then the proposal from Mesa Rich was for these keel signs with verbiage, and the Walt Disney sign, Anthropology was kind of low-key, but, you know, there were some very loud proposals. So, you know, this was kind of okay, but it was two, 36 inches high. They were proposing some of this stuff. True Religion Brangene, this was a lot, and this is, in essence, what we would be saying okay to, if we approved this kind of thing, is that these kind of signs could go up with that. And, you know, keels like this, 24 inches, but this was, I think it was red, something like that. So there was significant opposition, and Jenna Hale was the one who handed me the file and said it was a condition of approval at the time, that there were no signs on the, on the west side, facing the freeway. And it's in the file that when the village was approved, there would be no signs. I recall there was some offline discussion about what the architecture was, to your point, Charles, that it was, you know, the, the old railroad was through there, this was part of, you know, that industrial kind of thing, and there was discussion about that. None of that's really that important right now, but what we were concerned about at the time was that this would Disney-ize the freeway side of the village. And other people called it, Jane Levinson, our favorite person who we have not seen for some time, called it the Las Vegas-ation of the highway side. So Jana said to me recently, she thought that the white signs were okay with a trademark. So that's possibly some sort of compromise here. But, you know, I think that everyone wanted a unique identity for the village at the time in discussion, that it would not have trademark signs blistering the sides of the building, and that we would have a unique identity as a low, low-key stated, you know, sort of a much more elegant for the village kind of thing. When you put up the branding, then everybody's competing, and it, and it was a part of the discussion, that that suddenly turns it into a place where everybody has got their own identity up in red, and you've got all this stuff going at you. When I walked through the center of the mall, my eyes spin, I spin when you walk through there, because there's so many identities in there, right? It's just, it's a plethora of stuff. Those same signs would be on the outside, that are on the inside, whether it's the, the blue, the blue skin product line, and, you know, or the...
Ovita?
Yeah, or, no, no, there's another blue, something.
Blue Mercury.
Blue Mercury, that's right. So, and that's going to be a blue sign. It's not going to be a white sign, you know, it's going to be out there. So I think that what Bruce Mace did at the time was rather simple, and said, "The picture says it's this color, that's the color that's approved." So the picture was the same color as the building, and he said, "Therefore, thereby, it's going to be just like the picture." And that's why we're stuck with pictures, is that it was there, and we, by God, that's what got approved. And he was smart enough to say, "That's what you're going to get, folks."
And he actually named the paint colors.
Right, because it was on the building. So, you know, the opposition was great. I have had a couple of emails in the last 24 hours objecting to any changes.
Just for the record, I think it would be good to state if, if those are part of the record or not, but if there are, bringing those into the, into the decision-making process, I think they should be part of the record.
My email is public, and I'll be glad to forward them out to the staff. I will do that, and I, I think there may have been some other people CC'd on it. So I'm, what I'm doing is recounting some of what took place, and I think what happened in 2013 is, 2013 is relevant to the fact that a lot of those people are still here, and they still have some of the same viewpoints. Some have changed. So I think that Mesa Rich wants it to succeed, we all want it to succeed. So if the signs don't do their job, what does do the job, and what can we live with? I think it comes down to a art of compromise here in some way, if possible. And it might, I, I don't want to see North Face back up there in red. I don't want to see Microsoft up there in blue, and...
Blue Mercury.
Mercury in blue, you know, and Avita in green, and all this kind of stuff. I think that's too much. So I think that, that's my bid on this, and what somebody said in one, someone said to me was, if they did all the signs in the white with their font, just like they are now, and then they were allowed, like the Microsoft trademark, okay, that wouldn't be so bad, you know? So Blue Mercury would have their font and a little thing, if they have a thing, that would go by it, but we can't have all the colors. I made the point before, and someone has said all of this, that the storefronts, Phyllis said, on the town center side, are where they can put signs that are trademark and all that stuff, and it faces the freeway, it happens to face the freeway, but they don't have another sign option. That, that's their sign. And since I've been here, and Phyllis has been here, we've not approved anything except white signs on that frontage. There's been no colored signs out there.
On which frontage?
On the highway frontage of the town center. The counter, every, Great and Barrel, everything is a white reflective, back reflecting sign, and that's what we've stuck with. Color signs are not good. So with that said, I would ask Phyllis if you have anything you want to add to what I just said.
Only moving from 2013 to 2019, the, the building color where the ledge is, I am guessing is in the heirloom shade. Okay? So that's pretty light. If, God, I hate these names, Coal Miner was used for the color of the lettering, there'd be more contrast. I mean, I will admit, there is not much contrast between the, currently between the building color and the trim color, which became the sign color. There would be contrast. I would keep the font the same. I can see doing, I would prefer all uppercase, but I could live with upper and lower case. I think the community would be accepting of it. And like, for example, there's Microsoft in upper and lowercase, there's Tesla in all caps. And as far as a small-size logo, if it's within the width that they're allowed, the total width of the sign, like Microsoft's, I could even go along with that. But I don't want to see Disney cursive. I don't want to see a whole bunch of bars and lines and whatever else they could do with the sign.
So I want to ask staff here, and I, we might ask the applicant to quickly address things. Staff, could we condition this that each sign has to be reviewed by the commission? Can we do that in this case?
Sure, yes. Yeah, you can, you can require each sign to go. I mean...
But wouldn't be a blanket approval? We could, we could call it a precise plan with each application needs to be reviewed?
I would suggest you, you amend, or, well, I know, this raises the question, the applicant, the applicant isn't asking for that.
No.
And so the commission is asking for adding something, adding something to the application that the applicant isn't asking for.
So I'm just inquiring as to that possibility.
It's probably something we want to look at, the precise plan, and bring that back, if this matter were to be continued. The other thing is that you know from, the other thing will bring back more information, is that with respect to logo signs, and there are certain conditions, as we've discussed before in other projects, about when there's master sign programs, what you can regulate, and what's going to happen is, on a case-by-case basis, you may find your hands tied more so that you may have more control with a master sign program and setting the criteria, and you may find yourself that you aren't, don't have the kind of discretion that you really want on a case-by-case basis when you're dealing with logo. And, and I'm not telling you anything that we haven't discussed in other signs, we had this discussion on the Best Western sign and, and other logo signs around the community. So I, I would want to bring back much more information about that, but I would be concerned about that.
And I, if, if I may, you know, I, I do think, and I mentioned this earlier... And I, if I may, um, you know, I do think, and I mentioned this earlier, there is the intent of the municipal code to set up master sign programs, so that we aren't looking at every individual sign, and coming back to the planning commission. And I, and I do, I think Commissioner Lee did, did refer to it earlier. It does, as you may well imagine, it, it creates a lot of sort of individual looks and time and energy spent on those every aspect. So, that's...
There are only eleven.
Well, but, but this going forward, I also think is something that we, as a commission and staff, will be looking at, is not only for the village as a whole, let alone just the, the west-facing signage, the entire center, we should be looking at, you know, a master sign program for the entirety, as well as town center, because it, you know, it is something that is consistent with our code and would streamline, I think, in a lot of ways, some decision-making.
It's on the do list, right?
It is. Yeah. All right.
May I just say, I mean, we have to be very careful when we look at logos without mentioning names. There was a recent applicant, not at the village, who claimed a saying first was part of the legal name, and then, when that didn't go over very well, claimed that it was the local. And if we just say logos are okay, we're going to see the name of the store underneath this line of type with something. I mean, it's really tough.
I think what Judith was mentioning was actually the master sign program. You do have, you can control for all those types of things for the, you know, depending on what is existing, I think, is part of the equation. So, that's something that we'd have to look at. But clearly, for this, um, set of signs, what it's controlling at this point is the last approval, which was a master sign program for this limited area of the village. Um, and I think, again, in, you know, that's, that's the starting point, if you're asking for, we already went over, I'm not gonna repeat myself, but individual signs, each review of each one of these signs may, may end up being more limiting for the commission than actually looking at these as a group.
Thank you very much. I think that's very valid, uh, feedback. So, um, let's, we're gonna roll it up for the night here. But we're still sort of open. So, uh, we are open. And I would like to hear from you guys right now for a few minutes, and then we're gonna just continue the hearing, um, to the date certain. So, I, you've heard my thoughts, and you've heard Phyllis's thoughts. And I would just like you to respond to some of that about conformance, something different than what you've presented, if you're willing to go to a compromise, or if you have something else that you would put forth, or not. You know, so you could say, "No, we wanna keep the application as is," or, um, you know, "Want you guys to go home and think about it, and we'll see you in two weeks."
You know, a year ago, drive-throughs were not permitted in the town of Correda Madera, and they are now.
Not, no, one, one location?
A drive-through. I got the impression that three of the planning commissioners seemed positive about the signs, and, and all five of you, or four of you seemed positive about the paint color. And the momentum was going pretty well until, you know, Commissioner Metcalf and, and Commissioner Chase spoke, Chair Chase spoke. And you're, you're talking about the past. And, 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 and again, we understand what took place in the past. The landscaping was clear-cut. Some signs were put up. It was, I think, was handled horribly. I viewed it from across the street. But, but, but this isn't 2013. This is 2019. Shopping centers are evolving to stay relevant. We're asking you to let us run our business. To see five signs in one direction and six in the other, this, this is not a, this is not a big ask on our part. This, this is a common sense ask on our part. This is something we need. We wanna be relevant. We wanna be successful. Um, the idea of having each sign come to, for the planning commission, you have to understand, I'm paying these two people for tonight, and I get to pay them in two weeks from tonight, and, and so on, if this gets appealed. Um, you've gotta understand, we're running a business here. We are asking for what's in our application. Nothing more, nothing less. We're not gonna amend our request to you. We'd like you to approve it, up or down. If, we hope you approve it. Um, and let us move forward. But we're trying to run a business. And we, you know, we, we, we went to the planning department six months ago about using lowercase letters, and, and we're kind of assured, we'll just bring it to the commission, they'll, they'll approve it. But anyway, um, well, I'm, I'm talking about our town manager's comments. Um, and, and anyway, we're asking you, we're not going to make a change to our application. We'd like you to approve it as submitted. And if it means coming back in two weeks to, to further this conversation, we're happy to do so. But we, we feel what we're asking for is, is what we need to make this work. And we gave you all sorts of reasons about the, the, the two or three seconds you have to see something. If we keep them all in one color, in one font, without logos, we might as well not change anything. And we need both of these shopping centers to thrive. We are so fortunate in this community to have two phenomenal shopping centers. And, and I'm, I'm sometimes shocked that you guys don't come up and thank us for what we do for the community. And, and we're not asking you to do anything other than let us run our business and let our tenants be successful. We're here because it's not working. You know, if we wanted to keep it the same, we wouldn't be here tonight. It's not working. And all we're asking you is, 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 is to be reasonable. We're being reasonable. We're not asking for anything. We're not changing the size of the signs. We're not changing the height of the signs, the number of the signs, the brightness of the signs. We just want a sign to work the way it was intended. And if you can't see something, it's useless. So, no, we're not gonna change our application. We, we, we hope that, that you'll all be reasonable, and stop looking backwards. What happened in 2013, who cares what happened in 2013? This is 2019, and this is what we need. We're making huge investments. By, by the way, we have a million dollars approved for landscaping in this year's budget. We'll be coming back to you with a revised landscaping plan, not along the freeway, as, as Commissioner Bendel. That's all per the, this commission. But the rest of the shopping centers, landscaping is very tired, and we'll be back with a, a plan to do. It's a three-year plan, but we wanna start this year. But again, we, we're asking you to simply approve what we submitted without any modifications, because what we're asking for is the bare minimum. We're not asking for more signs, or larger signs, or brighter signs. We just want signs that people can see.
All right. Take your stand. All right. Go ahead. Yeah.
I just wanted to make, I won't repeat what Stan said, two things, just shed some light. Phyllis, you did mention a few times that the center was designed to have no signs on the freeway side. And I, I was aware of that discussion. Barbara Kautz, the planning director at that time, wa, was doing the same, you know, she was handling both projects. And there is a clear explanation for that. In, in, in those days, there were malls. Now, the town center and the village doesn't even, they don't, they see the mall as a slight almost. When I said those days were malls, the idea was there were two anchors, and lots of little shops in between. You, it doesn't matter what the name of the shops. There were shoe shops, clothing shops, uh, you know, you got your cigars, you got this thing. Those were small mom-and-pops. They were in the middle. But it's the Macy's and Nordstrom's, or, or Emporium Capital and somebody else that did all the advertising, that brought everything. And so, people knew in the eighties, you went to a mall. Today, there's de-malling happening, and the tenants we have here have as much clout, they do as much advertising as Macy's and Nordstrom does. Correda Madera Town Center doesn't even have a, quote, department store. But what I'm saying is here is that this center has evolved, like most malls have evolved, where they cannot depend upon just the draw of the two anchors, because there are many anchors. Anthropologie, Tesla, they have more clout, advertising clout, clicks, all kinds of things. So, so it's different from that standpoint. The fact that it doesn't have storefronts, that's a legacy that's very difficult to change. Um, I, I agree. But that doesn't mean that we penalize the center that's trying to evolve, that cannot suddenly, I mean, magic wand, I would like to move the center 150 feet or 200 feet in the middle and have, like we have a Correda Madera. Then you would have outside signs. So, I think, and the other thing I wanna make a point is that we are, this is, we are adding restrictions. You mentioned, Peter, some of those. For example, it's very clear, we can only have a single line. So, we're not gonna end up with too crazy, uh, it's a balancing act, and I think that's all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your commentary to the point.
May I just make one comment, which they may like?
Okay.
Since they didn't like my other comment. I recently read in the New York Times about the prevails of shopping centers, and what they're going through. And they said, "If you wanna look at those that are successful and will remain, they want either an Apple store or a Tesla store." This, the village has both. So, feel good about that.
Mace Ridge people were here on other applications tonight. It's just you, Stan, essentially representing Mace Ridge. Mace Ridge said to us that this is one of their highest grossing-per-square-foot malls in the country. And we wanna keep it that way. We all do. But it's not like this is on a downward slope. We wanna keep it vital. We have to address this. So, next time we come back, we've all got plenty to think about. You said your piece, and we'll see you in two weeks as we continue hearing.
Just for, just for clarification, is there any request of staff to bring everything, anything back in two weeks?
Commissioners, do you have any further information from staff at this point?
I would suggest that we actually vote on the resolution to see if there's three votes for the whole resolution.
I'll second.
And if, if there aren't, then there'll be more direction for Stan to come back with.
Okay. I, we could do that. Um, I would say that we might put some conditions into this resolution, so that we don't end up with a sign free-for-all, but that I fear right now. That's my thing.
We have to vote to continue another half hour.
Few minutes to do what Bob is asking. So, do, does everybody wanna do that? Do what Bob is asking?
I don't.
Yes?
No.
No. Okay.
Charles?
I would extend the time. And I, I've been clear about which way my vote would go. So, the discussion is, I would give them what they want. So, I don't really wanna talk about it anymore personally.
Okay.
And, and also, because I felt like you guys put a lot out there about the past, there were a few things that I wanna address that I think they're doing differently, and the way that you should see what they're doing with the paint and everything. And the way that Phyllis is biasing that this is like an employee entrance on the butt side of the freeway, right, is, is something that I think that they're trying to change, right? They're trying to improve this side, try to break it down, make it more human-scale, put real signage on it, so that even though the, the original building in the eighties didn't embrace that, because of the culture, they need more storefrontage on the freeway. And so, I'm for it, because it's better for the shopping center.
I just, I just need to get to extend this thing. So...
I brought that up in relation to the fact that the parking, there is, it's tough to find parking there because it was for the employees, okay?
Phyllis, Phyllis, do you, will you extend for a few minutes to take a vote on this?
I'd rather not. I'm not, I personally am not ready to vote on the signs. I'd like to do some, we're studying of it, and look into more things.
Um, I as well. So, I don't feel, I feel we would be rushed right now. So...
Do you wanna motion on continuing?
Continuing. Continuing. That's correct. Thank you. I would like a motion to continue, since I would not vote to approve this, nor would Margaret, nor would Phyllis. So, that would be a no to, um, continue, to go to a vote right now.
I think it'd be cleanest if just a member of the commission make a motion to do next, whatever that motion may be.
To continue.
Or whatever.
No, I'm sorry, to, for the time period we're talking about first.
You wanna continue the, our time period?
I think that's what we're talking about right now. And if there's no motion to accept that, then, then the meeting has to end.
Continue the meeting or not? Is there a motion?
I will move that we continue the meeting for half an hour, so we can take care of cleaning up our business.
I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Bendel?
No.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
No. So, it's a three-two.
So, we'll continue the meeting for another...
Well, I think we have to continue it, so we can vote to continue the item on the agenda, is what I'm voting for, not, right?
So, we're at the point where we either vote to continue it, or we vote, somebody makes a motion, so there's a, there's a motion can be put up for each.
Okay. I will make a motion to continue the signage discussion and vote on the current application from the village.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
To continue the whole discussion?
Yes.
I, I second.
Okay. Commissioner Bundy?
Oh, to a time certain. I don't know if...
Yeah, that's fine, to two weeks from now. Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Bendel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye.
And Chairman Chase?
Yes.
Okay.
That would mean we are continued.
And, yeah, yes. And, um, I think what staff will do as a result would be to, I'm just thinking out loud, but we would likely prepare potentially a resolution on the colors. And, and, so at least, at the very least, at the next meeting, that will be handled, because I think there was very clear indication tonight that that was acceptable. And then we will likely have a same draft for resolution, one way or the other. But we'll, we'll figure that out. So, we might break those into two separate resolutions for you.
That's a good idea.
All right. So, as it stands, I wanna be clear, as it stands right now, that, that the lettering is, would be two foot high, colors would be permitted, and a monogram or whatever it is that goes with the branding would be permitted. So, we'd have blue Microsoft, red Tesla, blue, blue Mercury, any of that would be possible at this point, up and down there. But it would all be two foot high, and that's where we stand with our proposal.
That's the application, yes.
And nobody's willing to change. I mean, the applicant is not willing to change.
Right.
So, we'll see the same application at the next meeting.
I'd also encourage that people that do have opinions about it show up to the actual meeting next time, because I feel like this, you know, the discussions beyond, beyond these rooms did not, should not take into effect if it isn't shared with the public.
I agree. And, well, and, and also, just as a reminder for the commissioners, if you do get correspondence in the intervening couple of weeks, please pass them on to staff, so that we can incorporate those into the staff, staff packet. Thanks.
Um, so, um, everybody's clear then what we're looking at with this?
Excuse me. Phil, is that your slide or the applicant's slide that's up there now?
This is my slide, but it's, it's cut and paste from the applicant's application. The applicant's, applicant's application is quite clear on what they would like the criteria for the signs to be. And if there's any, any questions on that, please forward those to me, and I will work with the applicant and clarify anything that needs to be, that needs to be clarified.
I would ask for you to send each of us a copy, to email each of us a copy of that, with both on the same sheet.
The slide, yes. I will, I will put on, I will put on the website this PowerPoint presentation. How about that? That work?
Well, I would like you to email... Well, I would like you to email me as an attachment, so I can print it out.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, this will be a continued item. Um, the applicant has said they're, they're not going to revise the application, so we know what we've got in our hands. We can, uh, have further discussion about it. Hopefully, there'll be more public input on this, yeah, because this is paltry compared to what was, um, before us in terms of public awareness before.
I also would hope that the applicant would at least think about making some changes. Not a complete new application, but see a way, maybe we can compromise and not behave like, uh, the US Congress.
All right, thank you. All right, so with that said, um, I think we're going to adjourn for tonight. So...
Adjourn, yeah, the other items will be dealt with.
At the next meeting, the minutes and all the...
And other, other meetings would also be, uh, continued.
Oh, one set of minutes goes all the way back to November. Why should we take care of it in January?
One request from our minute taker is that when we, when you do adjourn, Chairman Chase, that you can state the time, too, so they can know. Thank you.
I will do that. So, here, at, uh, 10:40, uh, we're adjourning this meeting until, um, the 20...
22nd.
22nd. Thank you.